The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Thank you, it's an honor to be with you. House Speaker Hortman, esteemed members of the House, assistants, aides, volunteers, and guests. To better knit us one to another, to raise our sights to the highest vantage point, to stretch our imaginations beyond the limits of our current commitments, to open our future to new possibilities, let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you treasure and delight in all you have created, all the peoples of the earth, the land, the sea, the sky, and all that lives therein. You generously provide us with a household for life and give us every good thing necessary to sustain us, to guide us, and to encourage us. You give us not only the right to exercise our liberty well, but also the responsibility to exercise it with love, made manifest in justice, in peace, in mutual understanding, and in universal flourishing. Holy God, in these uncertain times, heartbreaking as they are, you call forth these gifted leaders to what is often exhausting, heart-wrenching, thankless work in our halls of government, and you give them the impossible task of healing a broken world by not simply representing their constituent's particular interests, which is hard enough, but by also discerning and working toward our common interests, our common good, in which the dignity of each person and place is not only recognized and honored, but also defended and celebrated. This is dangerous work, God, and it is the work before us in this special session, to pursue not simply what is predicted of us, but what is possible from us, to be bold, to be visionary, to be human, to be a beacon of hope and a promise that our best days are yet before us. And so I pray, God, for these good people with whom you've entrusted this sacred duty, to discern wisely and to lead courageously. Give them the courage and the strength to see life through others' eyes, from others' perspectives. Give them the clarity and the candor to name difficult truths about the important ways we have fallen short in our commitment to guarantee the fundamental human rights of every citizen in this great state. Give them patience when they encounter cynicism. Give them assurance when criticized for doing what is right. Give them the wisdom and the skill to turn our hope and our dreams into life-giving law and order. Give them peace and perseverance in times of trial, and give them grace and tenderness in times of celebration. And in all things, give them the will and the wherewithal to do the most good, to seek what is true, what is honorable, what is just, what sets us most surely on our way into the future you have promised us. Make it so, most holy God, in us and among us, today and always. Amen.
The Chaplain for today is the very Reverend Paul Levens, England, St. Mark's Episcopal Cathedral, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Members, please join me for a moment of silence in memory of George Perry Floyd for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A copy of the proclamation from the Governor is on each member's desk and also online. The clerk will take the roll. Members, please state your name, the city you are calling from, or the location you are calling from, and present. Thank you.
Acem.
Acem, St. Paul, present.
Acem, St. Paul, present. Albright. Albright, St. Paul, present. Anderson.
Anderson, Barstness Township, present.
Anderson, Barstness Township, present. Backer.
Backer, Browns Valley, present.
Backer, Browns Valley, present. Bonner.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, East Bethel, present.
Barr, East Bethel, present. Baker.
Baker, Wilmer, present.
Baker, Wilmer, present. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, St. Paul, present. Bennett.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present. Bernardi.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present. Bierman.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bowe.
Bowe, St. Paul, present.
Bowe, St. Paul, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Peter, present.
Brand, St. Peter, present. Cantrell.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present. Christensen.
Christensen, St. Paul, present.
Christensen, St. Paul, present. Claflin.
Claflin, St. Paul, present.
Claflin, St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, St. Paul, present.
Considine, St. Paul, present. Daniels.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present. Dowd. Dowd, St. Paul, present. Davids.
David, St. Paul, present.
David, St. Paul, present. Daveney.
Daveney, St. Paul, present.
Daveney, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Dameth. Dameth, St. Paul, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Fairview South Hospital, present.
Detmer, Fairview South Hospital, present. Drazkowski. Drazkowski, St. Paul, present. Eklund.
Eklund, St. Paul, present.
Eklund, St. Paul, present. Edelson.
Edelson, St. Paul, present.
Edelson, St. Paul, present. Elkins.
Elkin, St. Paul, present.
Elkin, St. Paul, present. Ericson.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present. Fabian.
Fabian, Roseau, excuse me, St. Paul, present.
Fabian, St. Paul, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen.
Franzen, St. Paul, present.
Franzen, St. Paul, present. Freiberg.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present. Garofalo. Garofalo, St. Paul, present. Gomez.
Gomez, St. Paul, present.
Gomez, St. Paul, present. Green.
Green, Norman County, present.
Green, Norman County, present. Gressel.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, St. Paul, present.
Grunhagen, St. Paul, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmont, present.
Gunther, Fairmont, present. Haley.
Haley, St. Paul, present.
Haley, St. Paul, present. Halverson.
Halverson, St. Paul, present.
Halverson, St. Paul, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present. Hanson.
Hanson, St. Paul, present.
Hanson, St. Paul, present. Hassan.
Hassan, St. Paul, present.
Hassan, St. Paul, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Anoka, present.
Heinrich, Anoka, present. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, Niswa, present.
Heinzmann, Niswa, present. Herr.
Herr, St. Paul, present.
Herr, St. Paul, present. Hertos.
Hertos, Greenfield, present.
Hertos, Greenfield, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, St. Paul, present.
Howard, St. Paul, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present. Johnson.
Johnson, St. Paul, present.
Johnson, St. Paul, present. Jordan.
Jordan, St. Paul, present.
Jordan, St. Paul, present. Jurgens.
Jurgens, St. Paul, present.
Jurgens, St. Paul, present. Keel. Keel, St. Paul, present. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, St. Paul, present.
Katiza Whittoon, St. Paul, present. Koznick.
Koznick, Lakeville, present.
Koznick, Lakeville, present. Creshaw. Creshaw.
Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, St. Paul, present.
Kunish Podine, St. Paul, present. Lehman.
Lehman, Cohasset, present.
Lehman, Cohasset, present. Lee.
Lee, St. Paul, present.
Lee, St. Paul, present. Lesch.
Lesch, St. Paul, present.
Lesch, St. Paul, present. Liebling.
Liebling, Rochester, present.
Liebling, Rochester, present. Lean.
Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. Lilly.
Lilly, St. Paul, present.
Lilly, St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, St. Paul, present.
Lippert, St. Paul, present. Listlegard.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present. Long.
Long, St. Paul, present.
Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero.
Lucero, Dayton, present.
Lucero, Dayton, present. Luick. Luick, St. Paul, present. Mahoney. Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann.
Mann, St. Paul, present.
Mann, St. Paul, present. Mariani.
Mariani, St. Paul, present.
Mariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart.
Markwart, Dilworth, present.
Markwart, Dilworth, present. Mason.
Mason, Egan, present.
Mason, Egan, present. McDonald.
McDonald, Delano, present.
McDonald, Delano, present. Mecklin.
Mecklin, Clearlake, present.
Mecklin, Clearlake, present. Miller.
Miller, St. Paul, present.
Miller, St. Paul, present. Moller.
Moller, St. Paul, present.
Moller, St. Paul, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, St. Paul, present.
Morrison, St. Paul, present. Munson. Munson, St. Paul, present. Murphy.
Murphy, Hermantown, present.
Murphy, Hermantown, present. Nash. Nash, St. Paul, present. Nelson M.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present. Nelson N.
Nelson N, St. Paul, present.
Nelson N, St. Paul, present. New. New, St. Paul, present. Nor. Nor, St. Paul, present. Nornus.
Nornus, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornus, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, St. Paul, present. Olson.
Olson, St. Paul, present.
Olson, St. Paul, present. O'Neill.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Winona, present.
Palowski, Winona, present. Purcell.
Purcell, St. Paul, present.
Purcell, St. Paul, present. Petersburg.
Petersburg, Wasika, present.
Petersburg, Wasika, present. Pearson.
Pearson, St. Paul, present.
Pearson, St. Paul, present. Pinto.
Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, Austin, present.
Poppy, Austin, present. Poston.
Poston, Lakeshore, present.
Poston, Lakeshore, present. Pryor.
Pryor, St. Paul, present.
Pryor, St. Paul, present. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, St. Paul, present.
Richardson, St. Paul, present. Robbins. Robbins. Robbins, St. Paul, present. Runbeck.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present. Sandell.
Sandell, St. Paul, present.
Sandell, St. Paul, present. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, Hibbing, present.
Sandstedt, Hibbing, present. Souk.
Souk, Rochester, present.
Souk, Rochester, present. Schumacher.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present. Schultz.
Schultz, Duluth, present.
Schultz, Duluth, present. Scott.
Scott, Andover, present.
Scott, Andover, present. Stevenson. Stevenson, St. Paul, present. Sundine.
Sundine, St. Paul, present.
Sundine, St. Paul, present. Swazinski.
Swazinski, Nordland Township, present.
Swazinski, Northern Township, present. Tabkey.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present. Tice.
Tice, St. Cloud, present.
Tice, St. Cloud, present. Torkelson. Torkelson, St. Paul, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, St. Paul, present.
Vang, St. Paul, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Alco Newmarket, present.
Vogel, Alco Newmarket, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present. Waslewic.
Waslewic, St. Paul, present.
Waslewic, St. Paul, present. West.
West, Blaine, present.
West, Blaine, present. Winkler. Winkler, St. Paul, present. Wagamot.
Wagamot, St. Paul, present.
Wagamot, St. Paul, present. Zhang J.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present. Zhang T.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present. Yuakim.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present. Speaker Hortman. Speaker Hortman, St. Paul, present.
A quorum is present. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, 2018, Section 3.073, I declare the House organized for this special session. Representative Winkler offers the following motion. The clerk will read the motion.
Winkler moves that the Chief Clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the Governor by message that the House of Representatives is now duly organized, pursuant to law for this special session.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this is a ceremonial motion. I would ask for your support.
Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Introduction of bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction of First Reading of House Files 1 through 78.
First reading, House Files 1 through 78. There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that House File Number 5 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Yes. Madam Speaker, members, this is the motion to suspend the rules to take up the small business bill. I would ask for your support.
Discussion to the motion. Representative Dowd.
I would encourage members to support the motion.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
Yes.
Members, in that motion, we are suspending the Constitution. It is required to be by voice vote. The clerk will take the roll on the motion.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Backer.
Backer, aye.
Backer, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bowe. Bowe. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels. Daniels. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins. Elkins. Erickson.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Kuteza Watun.
Kuteza Watun, aye.
Kuteza Watun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha. Kresha, aye. Kresha, aye. Kunish Poudin.
Kunish Poudin, aye.
Kunish Poudin, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklin.
Mecklin, aye.
Mecklin, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mohler.
Mohler, aye.
Mohler, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson. Munson. Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor. Noor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, aye.
Sandstedt, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson. Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdahl.
Erdahl, aye.
Erdahl, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslewic.
Waslewic, aye.
Waslewic, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wagamot.
Wagamot, aye.
Wagamot, aye. Zhang Jie. Zhang.
Zhang Jie, aye.
Zhang Jie, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Bow. Bow.
Bow, aye.
Bow, aye. Daniels. Daniels. Lucero. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 5.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 5.
Third reading. I recognize the author of the bill, the member from Anoka, Representative Stevenson, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker members. I am happy to address this chamber and report that we have reached agreement with the Senate to provide much-needed relief to small businesses across the state of Minnesota impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. As the child of small business owners and as someone who, like all of us in this chamber, have heard from countless small businesses about their struggle, it is very important that we deliver this aid to them as soon as we possibly can. And so I'm very thankful that the House has agreed to suspend the rules and move the bill forward today. As I said to you in the closing days of session, when you own a small business, it's not just your livelihood, it's your identity. If this was a matter of dollars and cents, in dollars and cents only, it would be a lot easier. But for a lot of people, it's the first thing they think of when they wake up in the morning and the last thing they think of before they go to bed. So let me just briefly outline the bill and tell you that the bill spends a total of $62.5 million made available largely in grants of up to $10,000 to eligible businesses. There is a 50-50 split between the metro and greater Minnesota. $18 million of the $62 million is reserved for micro businesses, businesses with less than six employees. $10 million is reserved for minority-owned businesses, 2.5 for women-owned businesses, 2.5 for veteran-owned businesses, and 2.5 million is reserved for vendors in the cultural malls that dot Minnesota from St. Cloud to Willmar to Minneapolis and St. Paul. Also included in the bill is Representative Eklund's proposal to ensure that the legislature repays the 21st Century Fund out of a future surplus. Many people contributed to this bill, and I want to thank just a few of them, of course Representative Eklund, who I just mentioned, as well as Representative Noor, Gomez, Hassan, and Zhang for their wise counsel and involvement. And I want to thank across the aisle Representative Robbins. I can remember discussing this bill over the phone on one of the very first warm days this spring and our shared desire to help our small businesses in our respective communities. Of course, Senator Anderson and Senator Pratt in the Senate have been working hard on this proposal. And last but certainly not least, Representative Mahoney, who has just been absolutely critical to getting this bill, and his wise counsel and mentorship is much appreciated. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, and of course I'm happy to answer questions that members may have.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. I rise in support of this bill. It has been the product of a lot of hard work between Representative Stevenson, Representative Mahoney, the Senate, and other members of our caucus, Representative Koznick and Representative Haley in particular. And I am grateful that we are finally getting some help out to the small businesses of Minnesota. Members, all of you know from the heartbreak in your own districts that many businesses have struggled mightily under the closures that began March 26th. In my district, several businesses have already closed and others have around the state. I know that this will not be enough to help all of the small businesses who need it in our state, but I'm thrilled that we can get some amount of $10,000 grants out there and continue to support the businesses who continue to struggle because they have not been able to fully open. Businesses that have strong plans for operating safely, businesses that have invested in changing their floor plans and layouts to try and accommodate the social distancing and to make sure that they have adequate hygiene and safety training for their employees. The businesses of Minnesota want to keep their customers and their employees safe, and they are working so hard, day and night, to do that. I talk to business owners every day who have come up with great creative ideas, who are trying to make the best of this. But as one of my constituents told me yesterday, the current level of opening that started on Wednesday of this week will just prolong their death sentence. And he was devastated because it may help to get some customers back in, but unless they can fully reopen, their margins are too small, and they still are looking at such a crisis. So, members, I am grateful that we are getting this done today. I'm grateful for all of the small businesses we are going to be able to help. But I just want to encourage the body to remember that this is not enough and the current level of opening is not enough, particularly when there are so many counties with very few cases. I just encourage the Governor and all members to consider a more regional approach. There are counties where we have locked down their main streets when they have very few cases. And so I think we have to take a much more nuanced approach to this, and I am grateful for this effort, but there is more we need to do. Thank you, members.
The member from Sibley, Representative Grunhagen.
Madam Speaker, can you?
I can hear you, Representative Grunhagen.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the effort on this. However, it's a Band-Aid. We really need to lift the emergency powers and reopen this society. Wisconsin's opened. They haven't seen a spike of infections. Other states have opened, Florida and other things. This is just going to prolong the agony for these small businesses. And as was mentioned, many of them are closing already, and this is not going to help keep them open. Let's pass the resolution to end the emergency powers, reopen Minnesota, and give them a chance to survive. So unfortunately, I'm going to be a no on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Members, thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. I will be supporting this bill, but I think what we really need to have for our state and for our businesses to survive and our economy to recover is to allow more and more businesses to open. And I'm disheartened at the comments that I hear across the aisle, in the Jobs Committee, and at other events that simply offer people a mask as a crutch for their businesses to open. I think that's insulting. And I want to share with you some comments that I received from a local woman-owned business that I hope does receive some funding from this bill. It's a family-owned business, and they run a hotel here in Lakeville. But the revenues lost at the Holiday Inn this summer due to youth sports tournaments and events moving out of state to play. The total revenue loss on just one property was over $30,000, and that's just from tournaments that they had canceled. They've also had weddings canceled, and one recently moved a wedding out of state so that their guests could attend. They also have a property hotel in a neighboring city that has similar losses. And about two or three years ago, this family invested in a third property, also in Lakeville, that has lost out on some additional revenues from similar incidents, COVID and cancellation and not turning the dial fast enough. So this is just a few hotels in one little suburb, but when you think of the bigger picture and the amount of tourism and travel revenue loss across the state, this bill will not come close at all to covering those losses to our businesses and our families. So while I will support this, I agree that it's time to end the emergency orders and get Minnesota moving. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mahoney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a good bill. I wish it was bigger. I wish it was able to help more people. Our first program that we did about three months ago with $30 million helped 1,025 businesses. This bill, the second program, with $62.5 million, will help upwards of 7,500 businesses. Small, and it's designed to help the smallest of the small businesses, for a total of about 8,500 businesses that we are helping. I can't think of a better use of state and federal monies than to keep some of these small entrepreneurs open with the chance and the hope that they grow into larger companies and hire more than five or six employees. We will have invested $92.5 million in these small businesses. Again, I can't think of a better use of dollars. We've divided it 50-50, Greater Minnesota and Urban Minnesota, because we are one Minnesota. What helps Greater Minnesota does help the urban areas, and the urban area is the driving force of economics in this state, for good or for bad. We're going to help businesses across that group, whether it's in Halleck or Rushford, whether it's in the metro area or in Worthington. That's what this bill and these two bills have done. We've made it a large part of the package to help minority businesses and small businesses and recent immigrant businesses, and we've made it as fair as possible. We all got the question, how come I didn't get a loan from the feds or from you? And quite easily explained, many people had high-priced lawyers and high-priced lobbyists to help them get at that federal money and early state money. We have put a lottery into play for this. I don't want to try and go into explaining it all, but we will make it as fair as possible with this lottery. It'll be a third-party entity that does the lottery, so we don't have any play in that, or DND does not have any way to direct it. So, members, Representative Robbins said it best. It's a little, it's not enough. Do we want to help more? Yes. We come here wanting to help people. We want to help businesses and people, but we have other needs, and this was what we could afford. So, members, I hope this is all a green vote. Thank you.
Member from Aitken, Representative Lewick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And first of all, I want to thank colleagues on both sides of the aisle for working on this bill and putting it together. On the way down late yesterday, I stopped and met with a number of business folks in the Brainerd-Aitken area, and while this is certainly a step in the right direction, I just want to make the point, for our small businesses, particularly with the shutdown that has been visited upon them, the loss of simply the three-day Memorial Day weekend, that was the equivalent to an entire month's worth of winter revenue. If we're not open for the Fourth of July weekend, that'll be February's, and if we don't get open and fully operating by Labor Day, just those three days, that's three months out of their revenue. So I appreciate the work that's been done in this bill, and I will support it, but certainly the most important thing is here is get Minnesota back to work. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. I certainly appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into this bill as well, and I will support it, but I can't let this go by without remarking that one of the best ways that we can help these small businesses out in all sectors, in all geographies, in all types of business is to let them open up. Just let them be competitive. Let them do their thing. I've talked to a number of the businesses in my district, and they don't want to handout. They want to compete. They want to open their doors. They want to serve the people that they are there to serve. They all have this dream to open up a business. Their dream isn't to get a check. Their dream is to open up and serve customers who they have known for years or for weeks if they're a brand-new business. They want to be open. So I will support this, and I appreciate the bipartisan effort that has gone into this, but let's open the businesses up and let them be competitive. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Aitken.
Aitken, aye.
Aitken, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand, aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, aye.
Carlson, l, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Doubt, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian. Fabian. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, no.
Grunhagen, no. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, aye.
Katiza Waton, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunis Paudine.
Kunis Paudine, aye.
Kunis Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lily.
Lily, aye.
Lily, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Lewick. Lewick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson. Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson, M.
Nelson, M, aye.
Nelson, M, aye. Nelson, N.
Nelson, N, aye.
Nelson, N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson. Pearson. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson. Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdahl.
Erdahl, aye.
Erdahl, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wagamot.
Wagamot, aye.
Wagamot, aye. Jean J.
Jean J, aye.
Jean J, aye. Jean T.
Jean T, aye.
Jean T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Fabian.
Aye.
Fabian, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye.
There being 129 ayes and 5 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pattoon to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House Bill Number 37 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, this is a non-controversial transportation bill. I ask your support to suspend the rules and pass it.
Discussion. Representative Doubt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd encourage members to support that motion.
Any further discussion to the motion? Since the motion is to suspend the Constitution, the clerk will take the roll on the motion.
Aitken.
Aitken, aye.
Aitken, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, nay.
Bonner, no. Barr.
No. Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, aye.
Carlson, l, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Doubt, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.[1361.44]
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, aye.
Katiza Waton, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, aye.
Kunish Poudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Lewick. Lewick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Ariani.
Ariani, aye.
Ariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson. Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins. Robins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson. Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
I've got to catch up for one minute here. I've got to.
Key, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdahl. Erdahl.
Erdahl, aye.
Erdahl, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuwakim.
Yuwakim, aye.
Yuwakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Halverson. Halverson. Keel. Keel. Keel, aye. Bonner.
Bonner votes aye.
Bonner changes from no to aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading. House File Number 37.
Second reading. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Hanson moves to amend. House File Number 37 as follows. The amendment is coded A1.
Member from Dakota, Representative Hanson.
Amendment.
Representative Hanson, try again, a little bit closer to your microphone.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This amendment is agreed to with the Senate. It is a provision that Representative Fabian had originally put forward about accessibility for, on wildlife management areas for the disabled. I would ask for your support and move the amendment.
Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the work that's been done on this amendment, Representative Hanson. This is something we started actually working on individually and as a body last year, early in the session, and I appreciate the progress that's being made. We have a serious problem in Minnesota with getting accessibility to wildlife management areas for people who have a lot of issues with mobility, and this is a step in the right direction, and I look forward to seeing this pass, and hopefully, as the legislative session comes to next year, we can take some further steps. So, thank you very much.
Members, we are on House File 37. The amendment is coded A1. Discussion. Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With the author of the amendment, yield.
The author of the amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Representative Hanson, will you yield?
Yes, I would.
He will yield. Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Hanson. Representative Hanson and Representative Fabian, I support this idea. I think we need to do a better job of allowing the public to access the many millions of acres of land that the state owns and manages, and this is, at least the intent of it, I think, is a good step in the right direction. However, we have the agency writing the bill, and, members, this isn't the only area that we have agencies writing bills, delivering them to us, and then us writing them into law. So, in other words, you have the executive branch directing the legislative branch. Not a good approach. It's a fundamentally flawed approach we've fallen into over time and is taking away from our autonomy to do the work for the people in a legislative process and replacing it with one that directs and shares additional power with the executive branch, when indeed that should happen in the legislature, and the executive branch then should sign or veto the bill. So, Representative Hanson, why are we asking the executive branch to write the bill? Don't we have the ability to do this ourself?
Representative Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Druskowski, this language was a product of a great deal of work. As Representative Fabian mentioned, it started with his idea. Representative Becker Finn was involved. The agency was involved, so I think it's actually a good example of a collaborative effort where the legislative branch and the executive branch were involved, and clearly, it's moved through committee. Would be my intent, if we're back next year, is to have hearings on those reports, and that provides the legislative oversight.
Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Hanson. Well, Representative Hanson, I disagree. I'm reading the amendment, and it is telling the agency to write the bill. Representative Hanson, the work occurs in the legislative process, in working and drafting a bill, sharing it with people, getting ideas from folks, hearing bills, improving them, and doing the things that happen in a legislative process. There's no work involved in this two-paragraph amendment, or maybe it's a one-paragraph amendment, that simply tells the executive branch, "You have the authority to write a bill, and then we'll sit down and decide if we like it or not." That's not legislative work, members. That is a lazy legislature, and if the executive branch has the audacity to balk at the idea that we want to delve in as a legislature to the area of providing accessibility for people with disabilities to wildlife management areas, shame on them. Members, Representative Hanson and others, we need to have the ability to bring forward legislation on our own, and if, sometimes if the executive branch doesn't like it, that's the way it goes. And Representative Hanson, Chair Hanson, in your committee, you can operate in a direction that doesn't necessarily perfectly comport with what the executive branch wants, and that is how the legislature, members, is supposed to operate. Again, Representative Hanson, members, I like the direction of the bill and the intent here. We are not doing the work in this amendment, though, and I think we need to do better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Any further discussion to the A1 amendment? Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, to the point of this amendment, I can tell you that I've been involved in the development of the language. I had an amendment last year that was pretty extreme, I would say, and I knew it was something that wasn't going to pass necessarily. It did get through in the process here, went to conference committee, and there it got lost, and I was okay with that, but I wanted to start this conversation. As the session came into being this year, again, I had my bill, and we had hearings, and then we went, and Representative Becker Finn brought some language forward, and we talked about that, and in that case, I wasn't necessarily happy with the process. I was okay with some of the language that was there. We continued to work back and forth between Chair Hanson and myself, and Senator Ingebritsen, and Senator Johnson to come up with this, working with the agency, obviously, and so I think that this is a good step in the right direction, and I would encourage a yes vote on the A1. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading. House File Number 37, as amended.
Third reading, as amended. Discussion to the bill. Any further discussion to the bill? Seeing none, the clerk will take the role on the bill.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bowe.
Bowe, aye.
Bowe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, aye.
Carlson, l, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, aye.
Daphne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas. Hertas.
Hertas. Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, aye.
Katiza Waton, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, aye.
Kunish Poudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Lewick. Lewick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Ariani.
Ariani, aye.
Ariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
I'm out.
Moran. Morrison. Morrison. Munson. Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney. Navatney. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins.
Aye.
Robins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk. Sauk.
Aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine. Sundine. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdal. Erdal. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Navatni.
Navatni. Navatni, no.
Navatni, no. Sundine. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye.
McDonald changes his vote from nay to yea.
McDonald changes from no to aye.
Thank you.
There being 127 ayes and 7 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 65 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I inadvertently stated that the last bill was a Hornstein bill and when in fact it was Hanson. And this bill is the Hornstein bill and I ask for your support to suspend the rules and take it up.
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd ask members to support the motion.
On the motion to suspend the rules related to House File Number 65, the clerk will take the role.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Biermann.
Biermann, aye.
Biermann, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Koncedine.
Koncedine, aye.
Koncedine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daveney. Daveney. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson.
Ericsson, aye.
Ericsson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleveland.
Cleveland, aye.
Cleveland, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katise Witun.
Katise Witun, aye.
Katise Witun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Poudin.
Kunish Poudin, aye.
Kunish Poudin, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard.
Listegard, aye.
Listegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luwic. Luwic, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mueller.
Mueller, aye.
Mueller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson. Munson. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, yes.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins.
Robbins, aye.
Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott. Scott. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Daveney. Daveney.
Daveney, aye.
Daveney, aye. Munson. Munson, no. Scott.
Scott. Scott, aye.
Scott, aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its third reading. I'm sorry, it's second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 65.
Second reading, House File 65. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Hornstein moves to amend House File Number 65 as follows, and the amendment is coded A1.
Representative Hornstein, to your amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members. Let me just give you some quick context for this amendment and the bill. House File 65 deals with the transition from Min-Lars to the new vehicle title and registration system. Members, you'll recall that we passed legislation to enable that transition. The Min-Lars system, of course, was not working. And recently it was found that there was something that was missed in that enabling legislation, that there was no listing for fees charged for replacement fees for certain kinds of vehicles, tax-exempt vehicles, and a certain dealer plate. So Sections 1, 2, and 3 in the bill address that problem, and then Sections 4 or 5, a related issue concerning Real ID. And again, we've addressed Real ID a number of times here on the House floor, passed legislation. Sections 4 and 5 allow placement of Gold Star on the upper right-hand of enhanced licenses so that they can become Real ID compliant. So that's the bill, and then the amendment simply clarifies that the fee for the tax-exempt plates applies for replacement and not the initial plates. Again, the Sections 1, 2, and 3 are dealing with replacement plates. So that is the bill, and that is the amendment, Madam Speaker and members.
Any further discussion to the A1 amendment to House File 65? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 65, as amended.
Third reading, as amended. Discussion to the bill, the member from Brown, Representative Torkelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I'd like to thank Representative Hornstein for bringing this bill forward. Kind of long for the days when Min-Lars was a big problem. We have other things to deal with these days, but the effort to replace Min-Lars with the new system goes on. This legislation will help that proceed smoothly. Thank you again, Representative Hornstein, for bringing this forward. I urge a green vote on the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
Representative Hornstein.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I also just wanted to note that there's no cost to this bill, and the provisions have been agreed to by members on both sides of the aisle.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the role on the bill as amended.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Aye. Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Biermann.
Biermann, aye.
Biermann, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Koncedine.
Koncedine, aye.
Koncedine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daveney.
Daveney, aye.
Daveney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson.
Ericsson, aye.
Ericsson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleveland.
Cleveland, aye.
Cleveland, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katise Witun.
Katise Witun, aye.
Katise Witun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine. Kunish—
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Aye. Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. LeWick. LeWick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markward.
Markward, aye.
Markward, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Meckland.
Meckland, aye.
Meckland, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson, M.
Nelson, M, aye.
Nelson, M, aye. Nelson, N.
Nelson, N, aye.
Nelson, N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, no.
Navatney, no. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, aye.
Sandstedt, aye. Salk.
Salk, aye.
Salk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher.
Drumroll. Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomat.
Wogomat, aye.
Wogomat, aye. Jean-J.
Jean-J, aye.
Jean-J, aye. Jean-T.
Jean-T, aye.
Jean-T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye.
There being 133 ayes and one nay, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate. Madam Speaker, this is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2020 Special Session pursuant to Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota Statutes. The message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
Motions and resolutions.
House Concurrent Resolution Number Two. A House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota Peacetime Emergency, terminating the peacetime emergency pursuant to the authority granted under Minnesota Statute, Section 12.31, Subdivision 2, Paragraph B. Doubt moves that the rules be so far suspended that House Concurrent Resolution Number Two be now considered to be placed upon its final adoption.
Representative Douth, to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is a motion to suspend the rules to bring up a House Concurrent Resolution that will end the peacetime emergency. This is actually why we're here in Special Session. Chapter 12 of Minnesota Statutes says that if the governor extends his peacetime emergency beyond 30 days and the legislature is not in session, he must call the legislature back into session to give us the opportunity to end his peacetime emergency. So I would ask your support to suspend the rules so we can bring up the resolution and take that vote and ultimately end the governor's peacetime emergency. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
On the doubt motion to suspend the House rules, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I encourage a yes vote on the motion to suspend the rules. I will be encouraging a no vote on the main motion.
Further discussion to the doubt motion to suspend the rules. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails, the rules are suspended to immediately consider House Concurrent Resolution Number Two.
Doubt moves that House Concurrent Resolution Number Two be now adopted.
Any discussion. Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I'm sure that other members will want to speak on this. I'll give some opening remarks about this and then I'll give a closing speech once the other people have wrapped up. This is the motion to end the governor's peacetime emergency. This is the first time that this body has actually gotten the rule suspended and actually had this motion before the body for debate. I think it's important that we remember that this is not about Republicans versus Democrats or what party our governor is or what party we are. This is about doing what's right for Minnesota and this is about the legislature and the executive branch working together. We are under the longest peacetime emergency period since World War II and during this peacetime emergency, this governor has issued more executive orders than any other peacetime emergency in history. And he's done all of this without legislative input. So this is an opportunity and the first opportunity that this body will have to actually take a vote to end the peacetime emergency. The Senate is debating this resolution right now. We do anticipate that they will pass this resolution, that they will vote in favor of ending the governor's peacetime emergency. I also do expect that vote will likely be bipartisan and I think it gives us an opportunity here to make sure that the legislature is restored to its co-equal branch of government status that our constitution defines us as. And I think I want to take an opportunity to thank the governor for the work that he has done. I think at the beginning, he acted quickly. I think that was probably necessary to keep Minnesotans safe, but the time for his emergency powers has long passed. The time for quick action and need to act quickly to keep people safe has passed. There is nothing that, no decision left to be made that the governor needs to make. There's no reason for him to keep the emergency powers. Anything that he, any decision that he needs to make, we can very quickly pass a bill giving him special authorization with guardrails for him to make those decisions and reopen our economy quickly. Minnesotans have been harmed greatly by the governor's emergency powers and by businesses being shut down now for over three months. And I think Minnesotans have watched what's happened in other parts of the country. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in my closing comments and I'm going to flood you with data. Because this isn't about my opinion or your opinion, this is about whether our governor has made the right decisions and the best decisions for this state, not only to keep Minnesotans safe, but to keep our economy growing and thriving. And I know a few weeks ago, our governor was asked about some comment that I had made critical of his decisions. And his response was very simply, and I'm going to paraphrase, but something very similar to this. He said, "I know that some people don't think this is a big deal, but we're going to follow the data and we're going to follow the science and we're going to keep Minnesotans safe." I can't tell you how many times I have prayed that this governor would follow his own words and follow the data and follow the science because it is so blatantly obvious that he is not following the data and following the science. And I'm going to walk you through some of those figures in my closing comments. But this is our opportunity, members, to stand up for the legislative branch of government to make sure that the House is carrying out its constitutional duty, to work with the governor to keep Minnesotans safe. I have been very vocal and I have been very frustrated that this body has not had hearings on the modeling, that we have not had hearings on COVID-19 and all of those things. I have been very frustrated that we have been stonewalled by the governor and not provided information, the same information he's using to make decisions. But what has happened over the last three months, when the governor has not adjusted his plan and has not learned from what we have learned from actual things that have happened in other states, Minnesotans have learned. And they have seen that the governor has flawed data that he's making decisions from and the modeling he's using is incredibly flawed. Minnesotans have seen that, they can see that, and every day that this emergency powers goes on, that becomes more and more obvious. So with that, I'm going to close my opening comments. I'll speak again at the conclusion of the comments from members. If anyone has questions, I'm certainly happy to stand and ask, answer questions as to why I think it's important that we do this or any questions you might have for me as the author of the resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Munson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members in the chamber here today and then on the phone as well. We've been here several times before on resolutions similar to this and we've heard pleas from people about businesses in their community hurting, about violation of constitutional rights, the right to peaceably assemble, the right to practice their religion, the right to be treated equally under the law. And we have not moved the needle on getting the majority of this chamber to vote to end the peacetime emergency. Members of our caucus, as well as members of the Old House Caucus and Senate Republican Caucus, have joined in a lawsuit against the governor and filed this two weeks ago because this does violate the Constitution. The governor's peacetime emergency violates our Constitution and our laws of our state in three different ways. Now, the first one is that the governor's exceeded his authority because he's violated the non-delegation doctrine, because the executive orders are an exercise of pure legislative power without judicial oversight. There was a lawsuit in Minnesota which was heard by the Court of Appeals and they've affirmed that there's no judicial review of the authority that's granted to the courts in this governor's executive orders. So the judicial branch has no checks and balances on his power. And so that's why we filed a lawsuit challenging this delegation of duty. The second part of our lawsuit states that the Minnesota Statute 12.31, which is how the governor has derived his executive powers, doesn't authorize him to invoke this emergency powers because of public health reasons, because of a public health crisis. In fact, Representative Liebling, eight days before the governor invoked this emergency power, brought forward House File 4326, which specifically granted the governor the authority to declare a peacetime emergency due to a public health crisis. Because the law itself does not give the governor the authority to declare a peacetime emergency due to a public health crisis, it only allows him to declare an emergency when there is an act of nature, a technological failure or malfunction, a terrorist incident or an industrial accident, a hazardous materials accident, or a civil disturbance that endangers life and property and where the local government resources are inadequate to handle the situation. So although Republicans can stand together and say that the governor didn't have the authority to do this, Representative Liebling, the Chair of the HHS Finance Committee, brought forward a bill to grant the governor the authority to declare a peacetime emergency due to a public health crisis and that bill was never signed into law. In fact, it didn't even have a Senate companion. It's important to address when the governor oversteps his boundaries. Now, her bill actually also granted that the public health emergency, if enacted due to a public health crisis, would be continued up to 90 days without review by the legislature instead of 30. Now, the third part of our lawsuit and why we challenge this authority is because in Chapter 12.31, Subdivision 2, the legislature gave the power to the governor to do this, but then allowed for a legislative veto. So as Representative Hertas brought forward a bill to change this law so that the House and Senate must positively affirm it, in other words, we must approve it in each chamber, that's the proper way to do things. But the way this chapter of law was written is that the House and Senate both must veto this. And the Supreme Court of the United States has found that this legislative veto is unconstitutional. And this is why in our lawsuit, we've also challenged this. In the Supreme Court decision in the INS versus Chata, they held that the legislative veto is unconstitutional and nowhere in Minnesota's Constitution do we allow for this action to delegate lawmaking authority to the executive branch without having proper review by the legislature. Now, the courts may find that the legislative veto is indeed unconstitutional, but they can't sever this from our chapter of law because no one in the legislature would authorize the governor to have supreme lawmaking authority without any oversight. So whether you support the governor's decisions on his executive orders on trying to protect the state, you should agree that this is unconstitutional and the governor has exceeded his authority and specifically doesn't have in this chapter of law the ability to declare a peacetime emergency due to a public health crisis. Now, as this lawsuit challenges his authority, moves forward, and the governor has to declare where he has this authority next week, we have to also realize we have the opportunity now to take back lawmaking authority and we should be voting today to end the peacetime emergency. It's not going to undo all of his executive orders immediately. This resolution will go to the Senate where they can hold on to it and we can spend the next week writing legislation to enact into law appropriately the protections that we need to ensure Minnesotans are safe and all of the impacts of it, in tax law and in real estate law. We can do this correctly through legislation. So, members, I would urge a yes vote on this resolution and thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
Member from Hennepin, Representative Edelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Over the past eight weeks, I have been working and engaging with the governor's office. As a pro-business person that represents Edina, it has been important for me to make sure that our businesses are supported in this process. I've worked with lawn care, pet grooming, lawns, gyms, elective procedures. This last week, Representative Baker and I, over actually two-week period of time, worked to get over 100, we worked with 100 restaurants to make sure that restaurants could open for indoor dining because we knew that they were at a loss with outside dining only. So it is absolutely untrue and a misrepresentation to say that the governor's office is making these decisions on his own without engaging the House or the Senate. That is not true. Senators I have talked to, representatives from both sides of the aisle. So I just think that we have to be very clear when we say these things, that we're not having misrepresentations of what's actually happening. Thank you.
The member from Sibley, Representative Grunhagen.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Obviously, this is a crucial vote, you know, and I rise in support of Minority Leader Douth's motion and for several reasons. One, Minnesotans are smart enough to reopen their businesses and do it in a safe manner. One, Minnesotans are smart enough to reopen their businesses and do it in a safe manner. To do this dial a little bit at one time, you're still killing the businesses. I own my own business. I could not survive on 25 or 50% of my revenues. I couldn't pay my employees and my agents in my office. Now fortunately, I've been named essential, but think of how many businesses haven't been named essential right in your own district. Secondly, and it's already been mentioned, the data, the Constitution, and science demands that we open. Members, the modeling that's been used, and I know none of us are experts, but the modeling that's been used has been seriously flawed. And I'll give you several examples, well, North and South Dakota, Iowa, but most importantly, or just as important, a foreign company called Sweden. Sweden never had a shutdown, and yet they were projected to have 90,000 deaths, members. Their current death rate, which all deaths are tragic, is 4,000 deaths. That's how far they're flawed, and we've been using modeling that's flawed and not based on true science and the actual data. Now, keep in mind, members, the first two weeks I supported the governor, I wanted to see our hospitals get up to date and make sure that the medical personnel had some type of safety and are ready for the COVID-19 patients. But members, our rural hospitals are empty, okay? They're hurting financially. They're laying off nurses and employees because there's no, the patients haven't shown up. The other reason I think we need to open is let's look at some of the results. I want to work with the governor. I think all of you do. He's in a tough position, I'll admit that, but when we look at some of the decisions he's made, they're seriously short. And I would refer to nursing homes, members. We know that 80% of the deaths in Minnesota are in nursing home, long-term care or assisted living. Now, I appreciate Governor Walz did not mandate COVID-19 patients going into nursing homes like Governor Cuomo did in New York. The result was thousands of deaths, but he did allow it, and the result has been over 80%, or about 80% of the deaths in Minnesota are in assisted living or long-term care. Now, we had a HHS meeting, and the response was, well, the CDC and President Trump were just following their guidelines. Well, a guideline is not a mandate, and I'm sure they put the guidelines out, the CDC put the guidelines out, in case initially our hospitals were overwhelmed with COVID-19 patients and they had no place else to go with them. But to put COVID-19 patients into facilities with the most vulnerable is quite frankly ridiculous, members. I'm sure you've gotten lots of phone calls and emails, and I just want to share a couple of them from constituents. Here's, and they're just short. Here's one. Where does it end? Why does there always seem to be a double standard, much like closing down churches due to coronavirus, yet allowing Target, Walmart, Lowe's, abortion clinics to remain open? Deeply troubling. Are we still in America? What has happened to common sense, respect, and decency? We seem to be seeing more and more out-of-control childish ruthless antics coming from the left, praying for our troubled country. That was one of my constituents. Here's a second one. It starts in our state letting Governor Walz, the mayors, and Attorney General Keith Ellison, the city councils, who cannot be trusted, period. And to top it all off, we want to get rid of the police departments and defund them, reform it, and let other groups like social services act as law and order. Have we entirely lost our minds? And members, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the type of emails that I'm getting and phone calls from constituents, and you're killing their small businesses and the opportunity for them to succeed. So members, I strongly encourage a yes vote, and let's vote to work with the governor in a positive way and constitutionally. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Aiken, Representative Lewick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and this is a first-time opportunity to finally be able to have a open debate on the floor of the House over such an important issue. And when I say important to the area that I represent and the surrounding areas, it's a five-county area, and we've essentially got the highest number of businesses in the state that were designated, classified, branded, you name it, as nonessential. Today, yet today, we've got 25, 28%, depending on what county, what pocket of unemployment. The whole process here of an emergency order was to get a hold of things, make the changes we need to mitigate the problem, and good on the governor. We gave the hospitals the opportunity to reposition, to put in their necessary equipment, protective clothing, that type of thing, to work out the process. Once that's done, though, we didn't need to continue to shut down the everyday services that are critical, and I'll give you some examples that we had to literally scream with lengthy letters, one page, but four pages of signatures from legislators. Routine breast cancer scheduling, nonessential. Well, you think about that. These little hospitals in my area pick up one to two positive breast cancers on that routine, nonessential breast cancer screening a month. Think about that. We should not have been making decisions in St. Paul and particularly in the governor's office that put that many people at risk in Minnesota. Follow-up on things like heart attacks and strokes, people don't get over a heart attack and away they go and don't need to come in for periodic screenings. Those things got designated on, and here's the thing, the word from the governor's office was, well, that's what the hospitals and the medical people asked for. Yes, they asked for a pause so they could redirect what they were doing in my communities, and when they got ready then to reopen, to continue to provide the services that are necessary, basic public health services, they were told, well, no, we don't, the data doesn't show it, the data doesn't support it. You've got people standing out there that needed follow-up on cancer, on strokes, on heart attacks, people with chronic diabetes, not welcome at the hospital or the clinic anymore. That's the cost of overstepping emergency powers. I used the words yesterday in a meeting with a number of business folks in the Brainerd-Aiken area about martial law. Let me say that again, martial law. My years in the service, I worked in areas where it was martial law. Thank God it wasn't this country. It was on foreign soils. But we have such a micro level of management here that continues to this very day that simply has to stop. It has to stop. Examples, I mean, many of us played the old childhood game, a kind of a tag game called Mother May I, where you ask permission to take a couple steps, and while you were doing that, somebody would sneak ahead to try to tag the person that was it. Well, most of us in this room have spent the last three months just working 24/7 with our local businesses, playing a Mother May I game with the various agencies here in St. Paul. And that's just what's uncalled for. They had the plans, they understood what they could do, they had the relationship with their customers. We need to open all this stuff up right now. I mean, when I say, you know, the area I come from, we're still in real hurt. You literally shut down entire segment of our industry hard because, quote, "nonessential." Well, I'll tell you what, we've got the hospitals to the point where they're now doing what some folks would call nonessential, but we've still got our businesses. I mean, I can go sit down in a restaurant, I could have a good while ago if I wanted to drive into Wisconsin to Superior. That's what I saw on Facebook the moment Wisconsin allowed people to step into a restaurant out of the rain and sit down and have dinner with their family, was, hey, let's carpool and go to Wisconsin because at least we can sit inside and eat. That's not a lot to ask for. So I just want to say again, I absolutely support this amendment. The governor did what he had to do. He did the right thing to stop things while we got organized, to get our medical stuff going, to get the testing going, but it's truly time, it's truly time to step back and allow the good people in Minnesota to do the things they need to do, to take care of their loved ones. We've got responsible people in Minnesota, and we do not need the continued micromanagement that's going on from the agencies, whether it's the schools, the hospitals, the businesses, you name it. So again, I just want to thank the leadership on both sides of the aisle because finally, finally, we've had the opportunity to get this out on the House floor and actually debate it like the people that elected us sent us here to do, whether it passes or fails. At least we've been able to get it on the floor, and there was no excuse to continue on and finally here, what, three months later, we're actually going to take a vote on this? So again, I just urge a positive vote on this. It's long overdue. We've got major portions of Minnesota that continue to just be hammered financially. People have lost their businesses, other ones are seeing them go away. So I clearly urge a yes vote on this resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. I will also add my voice in support of this resolution. I want to draw your attention to what's over the speaker's dais above the fantastic picture of President Lincoln. Up there, it says, vox popularum est vox Dei. The voice of the people is the voice of God. I would argue that during this shutdown, from the perspective of the people in my district, their voice has been somewhat stifled. We, all 201 of us up here, are the voice of the people in our districts. That's what we're elected to do. In fact, our own chamber is called the House of Representatives. We are supposed to be the ones that bring the voice of the people from our district to the Capitol to make their pleas, to make their case, and to represent them in their lives and how it interacts with the state. I've talked to a lot of businesses in my district, and they have said, Representative Nash, I've tried, I've really tried hard to reach out to the governor's office. They understand he's certainly overwhelmed because he's got so many people putting information into the executive office, and I think that's a good reason for us to say, you know, today is a good day to end that. Today is a good time to let the legislature be the legislature. And I have some specific examples. You've heard me talk about the farm wineries and the distilleries and the breweries, but I also had a group of people from a CrossFit part of our state, and they put a petition together. And I had to use my office to get it into the governor, and they were not heard. I had a hard time getting it into the governor as well. I had to try several times. Members, we are the ones that are supposed to be here on behalf of the folks in our district. And we've heard a lot of things from the governor. We heard a lot of things early on that I think we all agreed with. We said, you know what, that makes sense. We'll support you, governor. We're going to vote to help you contain this in our state, but the numbers have fallen apart. And the folks in our districts are beginning to grow tired and weary, and they are becoming really desperate in how they go about surviving at this point. Like you, I'm sure you get a lot of calls from people in your district. I have gotten lots and lots of calls from business owners and employees. The CEO of the largest employer in my district is the CEO of Ridgeview Hospital, and I've spoken to him, and he says, you know, Representative Nash, there are people who are not getting served because we can't open up elective surgeries fully, and this is having a negative impact on the future health of the people in our state. They need to be fully opened so that they can address these issues. I've talked to other business owners who call initially to say, hey, what about this program? Or what about this thing? Can you give me some details there because those things flow into our office? And after a while, I chat with them, and five times now, five times, I have had business owners open up to me that they are now verging on suicide. And I usually wear a headset when I take constituent calls, and I've gotten into the habit of doing that, and I text people who can help them. One time, I had them on the phone, and I heard law enforcement come to do a wellness check on them as I had them on the phone. These are people who are now desperate for our help. We can't help them if the governor is still in the position of having all the cards. It is important that we take that saying over the rostrum and take it to heart. We're the ones, we, all 201 of us, and we seldom recognize the slower, more deliberative body unless we're talking about flash card sales and how to communicate with them, but all 201 of us up here need to be in that position to make the case for our people, to advance legislation, to advance policy. That's what's happening in this executive order, is policy is being created. We are the policymakers. We are. That's the important distinction that I think is being missed by many of you, is that we are the policymakers and we have the ability to end this today and take back our role to do our jobs that we all swore that we would do. I think of those people that have said, well, Jim, I'm really teetering on the edge, and I, one of them called me back and said, thank you for sending the sheriff to go and visit them. That's what's going on. We have people, proud, hard-working people all around our state, that they don't know what's next. They don't know when the end is in sight. They don't know, really, what tomorrow holds. And again, you've heard me say, and I agree, we did not go looking for COVID. COVID found us, but we now have to take the responsibility of governing our state back in partnership with the executive branch, not subservient to the executive branch. Today is the day. Today is that day. I just think there isn't a one of us that disagreed with the impetus behind all this. I was here with all of us. We voted for it. Now you can have a voice in voting to end it. I support the motion. I hope you do too. Think of the people who are in your district that are looking to you to be their representative, their voice in their government. Members, today is the day to stand tall. Today is the day to send a message to the governor. We appreciate the predicament that you're in. We are here to do our part because right now, I don't know about you, but I haven't felt like I have been able to do fully the job that comes with our election certificate because he's in charge of everything. Today, members, today is the day that you can stand up and say, respectfully, governor, we are no longer extending your executive powers. Thank you, members.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Liebling.
And thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I asked to speak in order to just make a couple of clarifying comments. First of all, I think the idea that we haven't had a chance to debate this before is really ludicrous, although procedurally, maybe we haven't suspended the rules to bring up a motion. We have had this debate repeatedly, so I just think that that is inaccurate. The other thing I really wanted to speak to is some comments that were made about a bill that I carried, to extend a pandemic emergency order for 90 days and to clarify, clarify that an act of nature included a public health emergency. And I don't think Representative Munson, maybe he wasn't on the committees where this was discussed, but I was very clear as I carried the bill that he mentioned, that what we were doing was bringing forward a clarification, that we always believed that a public health emergency was included under an act of nature, but that it made more sense when we had a public health emergency to have 90 days rather than 30 because of the very nature of a public health emergency, and that is indeed what we have seen. A couple of other things I'd like to respond to. One, we've heard a lot about patients not showing up at hospitals and hospitals struggling, and, no, I certainly think that the pandemic has uncovered a lot of gaps and a lot of problems in our healthcare system. One of these, of course, is the degree to which our healthcare system depends on certain kinds of procedures and certain things for its revenue stream, and that in itself is a problem. But right now, there aren't any restrictions on these so-called nonessential procedures, and in fact, it's overblown how much restriction there was in the first place. But at this point, the problem that we have is really, a lot of it is the PPE, the Personal Protective Equipment, and that problem is a national problem. That problem goes back to our president and our administration that is not prepared still to provide the PPE and to help states get the PPE that they need. And in fact, we hear repeatedly, and even in Minnesota, that some of what has been ordered by states has actually been taken and intervening by the federal government to keep it from arriving to the place where it was ordered. So this is still a very large problem. I don't downplay the problem at all. I think that some of our hospitals are really struggling, and many of our businesses are struggling because they need PPE to be able to fully reopen. So I wanted to make that point. Let's see. Also, this interesting that Representative Nash references the statement that's above the chamber, which I've also looked at it in my years of sitting in the chamber through many long debates, where it says in Latin, that the voice of the people is the voice of God. of God. That is something we should consider taking down. I don't know in whose religion the voice of the people is the voice of God, and why that was put up there in the first place, but that's certainly not something that I believe. You know, if different ones of us, of course, listen for the voice of God in our own way, or perhaps not at all, but I don't know anybody who really thinks that just because the majority of people say something that God is speaking. So, but in terms of people speaking, constituents speaking, some of my constituents feel that the opening has been too quick. There are voices on all sides of this. This is not a matter of yes or no, up or down. I think that the governor's concept of turning the dial is a good one. A lot of the impacts from this situation are impacts of the pandemic. They're not impacts of the shutdown. The shutdown is a result, and it's hemp to respond to the pandemic. And did the governor get it exactly right on all things? I think even he himself would say, no, we are all doing something that we have never done before. This is new to everyone, and he has done his darkest to try to get this right. But the question is not yes or no, should we have any emergency orders or not? The question is what the right level of those is. And I think that he is really struggling to strike that balance, because this is not only about the authority to be open for these businesses. This is really about whether people, consumers, are going to feel the confidence to go out and resume their normal activities. That's what really reopens the economy. So when I have, in my little bit of being out and about, and I have to say, I'm still pretty much trying to stay home as much as I can, and so are many of my constituents, I have noticed that in many places, people are not following guidelines. They are not wearing masks. And that is going to hold us back. And very unfortunately, wearing the masks has been politicized, and it should not be. It is a simple public health issue. If everybody would wear masks when they're out in public, if everyone would adhere to the guidelines, if everyone would maintain social distancing and really pay attention to these things, I think it would help us get back to normal, or at least a new normal, much more quickly, and help our economy to open up. So that's what I wanted to say, members. I do not support removing the governor's authority. That does not mean that I love the situation we're in. It doesn't mean that I'm not attuned to the cries of a lot of our businesses, and our economy is in that difficult, difficult position. We all know that. We all are hearing all the cries of everyone. But we want to make sure that the economy is going to reopen in a way that really works the best, so that people can feel confident going about their business. That's what is really going to help us the most. So there may come a point where it's time, you know, I'm sure the governor knows that there's a time to terminate his emergency powers. There may even come a time when we, as a legislature, need to terminate his powers, but I don't think that time has come. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Dreskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. A debate that continues but needs to come to an end. We need to end the governor's peacetime emergency declaration. Members, I'd like to thank you for the discussion today. Representative Dowd, thank you for the motion, and thank you for joining the effort to remove these unconstitutional powers. I think Representative Monson outlined things pretty clearly, but I'm going to go through them again in a little while. There were some comments made earlier about some of the initial actions that the governor took. And I have to admit, when the COVID-19 issue came forward in its frontal force to begin with, I was taken aback as equally by the reality of COVID-19 as I was by the powers that were being usurped by our governor. And as we look today and think about, well, okay, the governor usurped these powers, he's provided these dictates in the forms of dozens of emergency orders, I think we're up to 70 or 80 now, has it been effective? And I've outlined in my speech a couple of other times that we've been discussing this issue. The fact is, and the numbers will tell you, that it has not been effective. As a matter of fact, if you look at the states around us, and these relative realities, members, haven't changed since we debated this last time, or since we debated it the very first time that I brought this motion back in April. Deaths per million from COVID-19 in Minnesota and the states around us, as of today, Minnesota has 227 deaths per million people. Iowa, which did not have a stay-at-home order, has 203 deaths per million people. Wisconsin, which had a stay-at-home order and a shutdown order for a while until the courts intervened and realized that they were operating unconstitutionally, and shut down all their illegal orders, is at 117 deaths per million people, about half of that of what Minnesota is. North Dakota, which did not shut down, has 97 deaths per million people, a fraction, again, of what Minnesota has. South Dakota, which never shut down, and I admire the leadership of Governor Kristi Noem in South Dakota, to lead her state and the self-direction of the people in the face and realization of freedom, 83 deaths per million people, one quarter of what Minnesota has. So if you look at the health effects of these usurpations of power that the governor has stolen from the legislature, and he's taken then those powers and put forward directives and edicts upon the people of Minnesota, they've done worse than every state around us. Why are we even doing this? That's a question every Minnesotan needs to ask. On top of that, the governor's edicts telling people what they can't do and directing and engineering their lives has provided for today an unemployment claim rate of 14.2% more than all of those states around us. Iowa's at 9.8%, Wisconsin 9.1%, North Dakota 9.3%, and South Dakota 4.6%. So not only have more people per million died here in Minnesota, many, many more per million per people, people, many, many more people per million people have died from COVID-19 in Minnesota under this dictatorial regiment that has resulted from this usurpation of legislative power by the governor. Not only that, but our economy has been crushed a great amount more because of this. Members, if that doesn't say alone, we're going in the wrong direction. The governor has it completely wrong, needs to pull the plug on these illegal powers now. If that doesn't communicate it, members, I don't know what does. And so we have something in Minnesota and in our country called the rule of law. Now, we, the legislature, being the body that makes the laws, should believe in the rule of law, and so should our governor. As a matter of fact, that's come into question lately, how much the governor actually believes in the rule of law. And we've seen in the last 10 days where he's allowed criminals to get by with violation of the laws, destroying and burning hundreds of buildings in the largest city in the state. And then, not only maybe a couple hundred steps from here, two days ago, the lynching-like desecration of a statue, a piece of artwork placed here by our predecessors. And the governor does nothing. The people who burned Minneapolis are yet to be held accountable. The people who tore down the statue are known, but I don't know if there's been any arrest. And I'm certain that the governor doesn't intend to repair the damages and put pieces back the way they were. Members, standing there, the chief executive of our state, while this criminal activity is going on and allowing criminals to get by with that, while on the other hand, using huge amounts of power taken from the legislature to force Minnesotans into an oppressed state that has wrecked lives and businesses in two different ways, shows his lack of respect and adherence to the law of order, to the rule of law. As a matter of fact, Representative Monson pointed out earlier, members and Madam Speaker, if we look at Article 3, Section 1 of the Minnesota Constitution, and I will read it, "The powers of government shall be divided into three distinct departments: legislative, executive, and judicial. No person or persons belonging to or constituting one of these departments shall exercise any of the powers properly belonging to either of the others except in the instances expressly provided in this constitution." Madam Speaker, there's nowhere in the Constitution that says that the governor can write laws and then turn around and ask the legislature to veto or not those laws. As a matter of fact, members, I'll read one of the executive orders, just a portion of it, so we can see the whole pure law that the governor is carving out in these executive orders that, as Representative Monson pointed out, has no judicial review, like we do judicial review under Chapter 14 for administrative rulemaking, that this legislature provides the executive branch the authority to do with the judiciary properly overseeing, to provide the public the ability to weigh in. So EO 2063, the 63rd executive order, one of the edicts that this governor has brought forward and placed upon what was a free people, says, "An individual who willfully violates this executive order is guilty of a misdemeanor. Upon conviction, must be punished by a fine not to exceed $1,000 or by imprisonment for not more than 90 days. Any business owner, manager, or supervisor who requires or encourages any of their employees, contractors, vendors, volunteers, or interns to violate this executive order is guilty of a gross misdemeanor and upon conviction must be punished by a fine not to exceed $3,000 or imprisonment for not more than a year. In addition to those criminal penalties, the attorney general, as well as city and county attorneys, may seek any civil relief available pursuant to Minnesota Statute 2019, Section 8.31, for violations of this executive order, including civil penalties up to $25,000 per occurrence from businesses." That is a piece of the whole pure law that the governor is dictating in these executive orders. Members, we write the laws. The executive branch does not write the laws. And he has been writing these laws, and we have then an unconstitutional piece in 12.31 in statutes that has granted the ability for the governor to do this and then come back and ask us to veto it or not. The roles are reversed. Upside is down. The executive branch is writing the law and today asking us, or giving us the ability to veto it by calling us in a special session, because that's what this unconstitutional law that we're talking out of and operating out of right now says. So members, that's the essence of the lawsuit that Representative Monson talked about. I would encourage all of you to join it. I would encourage Democrats to join it. We have to protect the authority and the constitutional power of this body, of the legislature. And I read Article 3, Section 1 to you. Clearly, we're in violation. Our laws are in violation, and the governor is in violation. Members, it's time to restore the power to the people. It's time to restore the ability to make laws to the legislature and take them away from a runaway governor. Members, I encourage you to support this motion and bring back the authority of the legislature and, Madam Speaker, the rule of the law, the constitution of the state of Minnesota. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from St. Louis, Representative Schultz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I just want to point out a few things that have been said so far about the governor's emergency powers. First of all, we wouldn't be in this situation as a state if our federal government was more prepared to help states. If our current president would have taken the advice of a task force created under former President Obama on preparing for pandemics. There is so much uncertainty with this pandemic, and the governor has done so much to help people in our state stay safe and save lives. He's in a very difficult position where he needs to manage saving lives and protecting businesses and employment and jobs and income. And we have to help him and provide support during these difficult decisions. We cannot wait for the legislative body to act if we have more hotspots or more cases in the state. The governor has to be able to dial it down immediately to save lives. And as Representative Monson pointed out, Chair Liebling's bill did not have a Senate companion, so therein lies the problem. Under this emergency, the legislative body is not able to act quickly enough to dial it down if we need to. And the governor currently has significant support of the people of Minnesota. They believe he is acting and has acted responsibly. If we, if he wouldn't have acted, we would have seen many more deaths and cases in Minnesota. Research now shows projections from states that had stay-at-home policies compared to states that did not. And the states that had stay-at-home policies saved two to eight times. They had fewer hospitalizations, those that had stay-at-home policies, and fewer deaths. We can just look at states like Arizona or countries like Sweden. The governor is trying to play the long game, slowly opening up our economy. We don't have to go back to a total shutdown if more cases and deaths emerge from the pandemic. And the emergency is far from over. Even as businesses open, people are reluctant to go out because of the potential harm from COVID-19. And our hospitals, our nursing homes, our businesses, they still lack adequate PPE, vents, respirators, protective equipment, devices to measure oxygen levels. And so we could still see surges in our hospitals as more people go out and about and businesses open. open. And I, for one, do not want to be responsible for any COVID deaths because the legislative body was unable to act or act quickly. And I'm sure my colleagues here on the chamber would concur with that. In terms of the deaths that Representative Greenhagen mentioned in nursing homes and long-term care facilities, I just want to correct the record. At Minnesota, is about average in the number of COVID cases in nursing homes and the number of deaths in nursing homes. It's below the average for cases and below the average for deaths when you compare apples to apples, just nursing homes reported deaths and cases compared to other states. But we can do a lot better, and the governor needs to have the authority to prevent more deaths and more cases in Minnesota if necessary. So I support extending the peacetime emergency and giving him the emergency powers he needs. And I urge members to vote no on this motion. Thank you.
The member from Goodhue, Representative Haley.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. I rise in support of this resolution. And I think back to March when we started with the emergency powers and the governor visited us in our chambers, which is a very rare occurrence. And it was kind of a surreal moment as we were meeting in caucus to have the governor knock on the door and say, can I come in and talk with you? And we were all at that point trying to wrap our heads around this coronavirus and what was happening worldwide. And we had a discussion with the governor, and he said, I'm going to ask you for support to invoke Chapter 12, the Emergency Powers Act. And we all stood behind him that night. But he also made this comment. He said, it will give me additional powers, but I also urge you, if I remember his comment correctly, I urge you not to give me too much power. As I said, we stood behind the governor. It was a time to unite and to wrap our heads around this virus and to develop a plan for the state of Minnesota, to prepare our hospitals, to get supplies, and to learn more about how to protect people of the state of Minnesota. And we did that. We all did that. But the time now is to chart a different course. We will be living with this virus for quite some time. It's not over. We all recognize that. But it's time to involve all of us in the decisions on how to govern the state of Minnesota today, tomorrow, next week, next month, maybe next year, while we are still living with this virus. We all wear pins in these chambers that designate that we are a member of the House of Representatives, that we were duly elected to serve the people in our districts in these chambers. When I ran for office and I would be talking to constituents, I would tell them, this is really like a long, drawn-out job interview. Look at my experience. Look at my skills. Look at my values. Ask me tough questions because you get to decide who represents you in St. Paul. You get to decide who should be the voice for this district. So we all have these pins because the people sent us here. They chose. They elected us to be their voice. They elected us to make tough decisions. They elected us to serve them, to help our districts, to help the people that live there, to do the right thing for all Minnesotans. As other members have said, this is our constitution to have a representative body, to have a judicial body, and to have an executive branch. Those three co exist together to do the best thing for Minnesotans. But right now, we only have one of those branches making all the decisions. So I feel like I should take off my pin, Governor. I need to advocate for the farmers in my district, for the hospitals that are struggling, for the teachers who want to plan how to bring students back in the fall, for the businesses who are trying to get through these closures and want to reopen, for the families who have lost loved ones and haven't been able to have funerals, for the families who have loved ones in long-term care facilities and are worried about them, for the first responders and doctors who are doing their best every day to serve the people who have this illness. There are so many issues, Governor, that I need to advocate for every single day. And my hands are tied in some ways because all we've been able to do is write you letters, write letters to commissioners on behalf of our constituents, and wait, call your number, call your hotline, send you an email, and wait, and wait, and not get a response. I bring to this chamber years of experience in business and working with a hospital and working with an education foundation and nonprofits. In all those years of experience, I always said to my teams, I want to hire the best people. I want to hire people that have better experience than me, that have different experience than me, that bring different skills to the table because I believe more voices with broader experience and broader skills will make better decisions. I wanted the strongest team I could get in any role I have had throughout my career. This chamber is a strong team. This is not Democrat or Republican governor. This is not partisan. This is using all the voices, all the experience in this chamber, and all the people behind us that bring us their advice. That's using all of us to make better decisions. That's what we're asking you for today, Governor, because we will be living with this virus for a while. I'd also ask you, Governor, in extending these powers, what are the parameters for when it will change? When is there not? You have not laid that out to us at all. That hasn't been discussed in these chambers. When will we not need emergency powers? When will you not need the full voices of this body? Another month? Another two months? Another three months? Another six months? When will we plan to get back to our constitutional rights and our constitutional values in how our government was designed to work? I think that should be today, Governor, because the experience and the talent and the knowledge in this room can help represent Minnesota to the best of all of our abilities. That is what we are asking to do. And I urge my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to vote for this resolution today because together we can do better work. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The representative from Dakota, Representative Mann.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Minnesotans, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, Minnesotans have been hurt. They have been hurt by a global pandemic, not by the governor's actions. We are the representative for the people. Representative Nash, so let's bring up the voices of the almost 1,300 Minnesotans who are no longer with us. The voices of over the 116,000 Americans who are no longer with us because we have somehow seemed to have forgotten about them. The voices of the people who are currently in the ICU, who may or may not come home. This emergency is not over. You want to follow data? Closing down the areas of gathering have saved thousands of lives. That's the data. That's science. Representative Daskowski, comparing Minnesota numbers to surrounding states is comparing apples to oranges. It is not the same. And that's basic science and basic epidemiology. Those numbers literally meant nothing. And we have had hearings on the modeling and the data, Representative Dowd, multiple hearings, actually. Just because some of you were not there doesn't mean that they did not happen. So let me say that again. The emergency is not over. To say that we can quickly pass laws to address if and when we have another spike is ludicrous. And our hospitals are hurting, but not because of the governor's orders, but because we have a healthcare system that prioritizes money over patient care. Our hospitals were hurting before the pandemic, especially our rural hospitals, Representative Greenhagen. We also need to stop this misinformation that people aren't getting medical care. Cancer treatments have not stopped. Necessary medical care has not stopped. Those statements are straight up false. Members, I have to put on full PPE daily to see patients because this emergency is not over. Supporting the motion to end the peacetime emergency is a mistake, a lethal mistake. And lastly, I just have to mention that I cannot believe the audacity to use the word lynching to describe the taking down of a statue of a man who did exactly that to real people. That is the most incredibly tone-deaf statement and offensive statement I may have heard on this floor, and I have heard some incredible things on this floor. Unbelievable. Thank you, Madam.
The member from Traverse, Representative Backer. The member from Hennepin, Representative Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members, we're living in unprecedented times. No one asked for this, maybe least of all, our governor. No one wanted the planet to be taken over by a global pandemic that has claimed hundreds of thousands of lives and almost 1,300 Minnesotans. And let's remember, that was after measures were taken to decrease the transmission of this novel coronavirus. There is much we still don't know about it. We are still grappling with the virology, the epidemiology, the transmissibility, the treatment, and the prevention of this virus. But we do know that cases are currently rising in at least 21 states. We are not through this challenge. It is not over. And this is not unique to Minnesota. We're in the midst of a global pandemic that is impacting all corners of the globe. Every state in our country is being challenged by this novel virus. This is about protecting our people and protecting our states. I support extending the peacetime emergency because the emergency is not over. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Traverse, Representative Backer. Representative Backer.
Good. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I stand to support the resolution. As an entrepreneur and living in greater Minnesota, I am the only representative that my district, I represent, borders North Dakota and South Dakota. And what I'm hearing out in greater Minnesota is that why do we have to treat all of Minnesota the same way? I also have an interesting perspective, also volunteers at EMT. And just like Representative Mann, I have dressed up in what I call the banana suit on a call. So I understand the care of taking care of people and also preventing sickness because like tonight, I'll be on call, and if somebody dials 911, I'm the person that will be responding. So I understand the need of good healthcare and the need of protecting people. But what I'm hearing is why in west-central Minnesota and other parts of greater Minnesota, why do we have to be constantly treated like the metro area? And this is what people are saying is that the governor in St. Paul does not trust Minnesotans to make common sense decisions. It is the greatest frustration that I am getting treating them like kids, especially with entrepreneurs. I'm an entrepreneur, and I know several other members are. But for those of you who are not an entrepreneur, you will find, and I'm not saying no one else works hard, please don't take this out of context, but entrepreneurs work their tail off to be successful. They understand risk. But when you have an administration that has never ran a business, a small business, if it's a sole proprietorship or five people, 10 people, their perspective is different. Entrepreneurs do not mind to fight, but they want to be trusted. And this is where I'm hearing so much frustration. We have law-abiding citizens, business owners, who will follow the law, and they've been following the law in regards with what to follow, and then it keeps getting kicked down the road. And us business owners, entrepreneurs, will do everything to make sure we treat our customers good. It's no different than what farmers do. We have people who believe that farmers do not treat their land good. Why would they not? Because they have to take care of their resources. Business owners understand too. What's their number one resource? Customers. If you don't have customers, you don't have anything. So they're going to be very respectful. They're going to take those extra precautions. And the things that I'm constantly hearing over and over is, why does the governor and St. Paul not trust us? We understand what's going on in greater Minnesota other than the metro area of our area because we are from the area, and that's what I've constantly heard. So along with that, I've heard some other members say that people don't want to get out. I don't know if anybody was in the metro area during Memorial Day. There was a lot of people heading out away from the metro area. So yes, people are ready to move forward with their lives. People are ready to get on, and they're going to do it respectfully. We have people who are constantly, unfortunately, going to Wisconsin, North Dakota, and South Dakota because they're saying, hey, we are not being trusted. So now, I'm not saying that's what the governor's intent is, folks, but what I'm saying is, this is perception, and perception is reality. We all know that can be the case. So I'm standing in support of this motion to move forward from a, not just a business perspective, but letting Minnesotans do what they need to do. And they're going to treat other Minnesotans like they have. And we just can't keep putting the thumb on entrepreneurs, business owners, our hospitals, our schools, and so forth. So thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Quam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. We are a democracy. You need to allow the voice and power of the people through their elected representatives to return. Please add 201 voices of the people to the decision-making process. Vote for this resolution, empower the voices of the people of Minnesota, and end the emergency powers in and by one. Please support the resolution. Thank you.
The member from Dakota, Representative Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I hear the frustration and I hear the impatience, but let us be honest about why we are in the position that we are in. We are in this position because of a historic global pandemic that has swept across the globe. Our scientists and our physicians and our health professionals and our epidemiologists have only been studying this phenomenon since the very end of 2019. We barely have six months in on understanding the way that this disease spreads, the way that it affects populations, and the long-term impacts that we are going to see in our system. We don't even know if people are immune once they have it. We have a lot to learn. And hats off to our scientists who are working as hard and fast as they can to protect people in our country and protect people in Minnesota. This is not a pandemic that is the making of our governor. And our governor is an elected representative of the people. To provide the nimbleness to respond... To provide the nimbleness to respond to something that we do not understand is vitally important. As a legislature, we do not sit year-round. We represent our constituents in many ways when we are not in session, including being in contact with the governor, and that is a job we will continue to do. And we will continue to be a partner with the governor as we fight this disease in our communities. I'm hearing members say that this is somehow a metro problem. And when you look at the science and you look at the data, it is crystal clear that this is not impacting the metro area at different rates than it is in rural Minnesota. Rural Minnesota is not immune to the spread. Rural Minnesota is not immune to the outbreaks. We have to be vigilant across the state to prevent the spread of this illness. And where did it start? The fact is, is we started out far behind in fighting this pandemic in the United States. I have been part of pandemic planning in other jobs that I have done when we were going to face the bird flu many years ago, maybe more than a decade ago. And it's very clear that the planning to prevent the spread of this disease in the United States was not done. The prevention and precautions were not taken. Our supply chain for personal protective equipment to protect our healthcare workers, to protect employees in nursing homes, were not there. We did not have the capacity. And we did not have the capacity for ICUs and ventilators that patients were going to need to fight this disease. And so we started out way behind. And so our economy contracted very, very quickly because we were so far behind in being able to protect our healthcare system so that it would be able to serve the patients and save lives. That's why things contracted so fast, is because we were not ready. And we are still just getting ready. Minnesota is now leading with partners like the U of M and Mayo in getting a testing capacity where we can actually understand how this disease is spreading through our state. But that has just finally ramped up, and thanks to the National Guard and thanks to the governor's office for making sure that people can get access to testing whether or not they are symptomatic. Because we know that 40% of people who carry this disease do not display symptoms, or they are shedding the virus before they display symptoms. We also are just learning how this disease impacts people. It doesn't impact everybody the same way. We're very familiar with the symptoms of lung distress that patients face, but there are other manifestations that we're seeing. Manifestations in children are very different than they are in adults. Manifestations of heart impacts, of kidney impacts. This is affecting bodily symptoms, and we're just getting to know it. And we also don't know what the long-term impacts of being ill are. This is not an illness that you get and recover from quickly. There's a lot of evidence that there is long-term lung damage that could be happening to people, long-term organ damage that could be happening. We're just learning. So keeping Minnesotans safe is our primary responsibility. And being able to react quickly is the responsibility of our state government. And in order to react quickly, we can, as a legislature, give the power to the governor to react quickly, not without oversight, not without input, but with the level of flexibility that they need. And let's be really, really clear. When I say that this disease does not impact everybody the same, it's not affecting communities in the same way. We also know that in Minnesota, for all the disparities in education, for all the disparities in housing that we see, for all the disparities in public safety that we see, this disease is laying bare the disparities in our healthcare system and in the way that this disease is affecting communities of color. We have got to do everything we can to protect Minnesotans and to get on top of the fact that this is affecting communities of color at a rate of two to one of white populations. There are a number of reasons that are deeply steeped in systemic racism that exists in the state of Minnesota. And this is one more system that we need to attack and break down to make sure that all Minnesotans have access to health and can be safe in their communities. And we do want to open up. I miss people. I miss hugging my friends. I miss hanging out with my parents. I miss, my kid misses his friends. And he misses going to school, which is a great thing to hear from your middle schooler. He wants to see his teachers. But here's the thing, we need to open up in a way that's safe for the rest of Minnesota. We have a responsibility to protect one another. And quite honestly, there are far too many people, I have heard, in this chamber that are not taking this disease seriously. Too much misinformation is out there that somehow this is not a dangerous disease, somehow that this isn't a dangerous disease for young people, somehow that people aren't at risk from COVID-19, and that wearing a mask is unnecessary or a joke. We have a responsibility to make sure that as we open up, and we're doing it, and I'm going to my local businesses, and I'm wearing my mask to protect their employees, because here's the thing, if we don't do that, if we are not all in on protecting one another, the opening up of our economy won't be able to stay open. Employees are going to get sick. You know, our employers want their workers to be healthy and be able to show up for work. But it's going to take every single one of us committing to protecting one another by doing the things that the CDC is recommending, like wearing masks, like being sure that we are not spreading misinformation, like being sure that we are listening to the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC and the experts in science, and listening to our doctors. I was so glad to hear Representatives Morrison and Representative Mann talk about what this really means. So we are finally at a place where we're getting to the amount of PPE we need, we're getting to the amount of testing that we need, we're getting to the ICU capacity that we need. And so those dials are turning, and the governor and the Department of Health and all of the agencies are working very hard with the stakeholders to turn those dials. But it's going to take all of us, all of us committing to making sure that we are looking out for one another so that as our economy reopens, it continues to reopen, and we don't have to do what other states have done and shut things back down because people are not taking it seriously. So I implore everybody to provide the flexibility that our state needs with the governor's ability to make decisions with our advice, with our consent, and on behalf of our constituents. And every single one of us, take the responsibility to protect your friends, protect your neighbors, protect your communities. Get tested, wear a mask, social distance, and we will see Minnesota open and prosper and healthy. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Stearns, Representative O'Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. It's St. Patrick's Day, a day very important to people from my ancestry. The day that the bars in St. Paul were closed because of COVID-19, and we began to close down the state of Minnesota for the protection of the people in the state of Minnesota. I find that kind of interesting because I don't know a Minnesotan that I talked to that wasn't with the governor on St. Patrick's Day. The governor said, I need two weeks. I need two weeks to be able to make sure that we can get the number of ICU beds necessary, to make sure that we can get the medical staff in place and that we can get things underway. Two weeks is going to be a hard shutdown. And my goodness, people thought that the end of the world was just around the corner. Two weeks came, two weeks went. We extended the shutdown. Businesses didn't know for sure, should they be ordering inventory? Shouldn't they be ordering inventory? Should they be bringing people back? Shouldn't they be bringing people back? Another two weeks went by. Still shut down, still no end in sight. Another two weeks, still no end in sight, still shut down. Oh, a little bit of a peak of sunshine, we'll start letting some things happen. But when I think about this, that brings us to about the end of April. Do you know what April 2020 was in the state of Minnesota, as well as across the country? It was the month that we do a national census to find out how many people this nation has. Why is that important? Because in this chamber, every 10 years, and for those of you who haven't been through it, boy, oh, boy, next year are you in for a good time, we do redistricting our congressional seats and our legislative seats. And boy, do people fight tooth and nail to make sure that those numbers are exactly, exactly right, that there's fair representation. 201 legislators. Why? Because they're closest to the people. The closest to the people, the people that constituents, the hard-working people, the residents, the citizens of the state of Minnesota have contact with. Speed the clock ahead. The weather's getting nicer. The governor doesn't want a sunset. The governor doesn't want to step back until you can get 5,000 tests. 5,000 tests a day is what I need. It's 5,000. It's 5,000. No more, no less, 5,000. Well, we got close to that goalpost, and it moved again. Now I got to have 10,000 tests a day. The goalposts keep moving. And here we are, a bipartisanly supported, several bills backing the governor, backing the business of the people of the state of Minnesota. May 17th, we are adjourned. The governor wants to extend his peacetime order. That's why we're here today, ladies and gentlemen. And what are we facing? We are facing a budget deficit. We are waiting for a bonding bill to be passed. We have several other items that have occurred since the end of session that need our attention here in the state of Minnesota. What would be wrong with sitting down at the table with the governor as he asks, hey, legislature, I'd like to work with you? I sometimes get the impression when it works for him. I don't mean to be disparaging with that. It's just that impression that I'm getting and formulating as a result of hearing communications. Hmm, seems interesting. Maybe the legislature and the governor could sit down, and the legislature and the governor could say, here are the orders that we need to have in law, and here is the refined authority that I need to have. And legislature, since you're already in special session, why don't you do this? Why don't you just recess and come back after we've had a chance to talk about budget shortfalls and some potential budget cuts and savings? Work out a bonding bill, work out some of the other pressing matters, and do this together as the constitution of the state of Minnesota asks. I don't think that's too much for this legislature to ask of its chief executive officer to work with the legislature. I'm going to tell you, having been back in my district since we've adjourned, I have seen hundreds of the most amazing people that I have seen for an awful long time. These are the people who were born in the wake of 9/11, who grew up in the greatest recession that this country has seen, and whose senior year was taken away from them because of COVID-19. Because of my long-term involvement and civic service in the community that I live in, I was asked if I would help put together a graduation parade where graduates would socially distance from each other, and the parents would come down and grandparents down Main Street in their vehicles that are decorated to honor those students. We were even able to get fireworks for graduation in a socially-distanced graduation party. I was so impressed with the resilience of these individuals, the next leaders in our country. They're watching what we do. They're watching to see if the powers that the legislature has and the governor have can be worked out and balanced. I was so impressed with what those individuals had done. Representative Damuth and Senator Howe and I put a letter in the St. Cloud Times calling out our next leaders, asking them to do the right thing. I'm asking this generation of leaders to do the right thing today as well. Let's vote to sunset, get the governor back to the table with us, and work out a reasonable solution, since we're going to be here either on and off throughout the summer, one way or the other. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Douglas County, Representative Franzen.
Thank you, members, and thank you, Madam Speaker. We have 134 members in this body, not exactly represented in the chamber today because we still are not allowed to meet. 134 districts represented in the state, we all have a voice. Some of us have a voice inside the chamber, and some of us at our homes. Meanwhile, we are opening up the states where we can half-fill our church, partially fill a restaurant, but we still, as lawmakers duly elected by our district, still cannot sit in the seats where our voters elected us to be, to be their voice. This has been very challenging for the people of the state of Minnesota. When we first started off, it was projected 74,000 people would die. 74,000, that's a lot of people. Citizens of Minnesota said, we will do our part. We will do our part. And they did. And they thought it was going to be temporary. They didn't realize, three months later, and the governor would still hold these emergency powers, giving us graphics with dials, which people say is a joke. They're not stupid. They're tired of being treated like children. They're tired of the dials. They want to smash the virus control machine. There was one graphic that looked more like a Chutes and Ladders game. I called it the COVID Chutes and Ladders game, where early in May it said, there was a revised executive order on elective surgery that wasn't colored in yet, additional customer-facing businesses, that wasn't quite colored in yet, it is now, I assume. Oh, we could hold small family gatherings. What a joke. Government? Government saying it's okay to hold small family gatherings? What is this going on? And then there was something about open places, some more businesses that could open. And then at the very end of this graphic, it said more to come, which was not colored in. Now, I remember this particular social media post that the commentator said, it's like an infomercial. Oh, look, wait, there's more to come. And indeed, we are in the middle of June, and we're finding out there's still more to come. A week and a half ago, when restaurants were allowed to open up, or two weeks ago when it was told that they were allowed to open up with patio seating, do you know how many businesses in the state of Minnesota that had barely any income went in and spent capital that they didn't exactly have to expand patio seating? Some of them put in brand-new patios. Some of them had to go out and purchase additional tables and chairs. Some had to do both. Thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars were spent in order to jump through yet another hoop that the governor said these small businesses had to jump through if they wanted to earn more money. So they... So they did it. And then a few days later, after they opened up for their patio seating, guess what? Oh, look, more to come. Now you get to have some people sitting inside your facility. Sunday I went to, Sunday I went to a restaurant, and the owner said to me, yep, Mary, spend all this money on new patio furniture, and now we get to have people inside. I said, yep, what a scam. He said, Mary, that's what I say, what a scam. 74,000 deaths, though, which was later revised to about 50,000 to 55,000, and then somewhere in the 20-some thousand. In fact, though, that Minnesota went and bought itself a mega morgue. There were going to be so many bodies that they had to purchase an additional freezer warehouse to hold bodies so that they could be held with dignity and respect. Except that $6.9 million building is never going to be used, ever. In fact, Minnesotans know that that was nothing more than just a tool in the toolbox to keep them afraid and insecure. They knew that they were being had. I asked, I asked some individuals, what exactly would you like me to say on behalf of you with the peacetime emergency powers that Governor Walz continues to cling to? What do you want me to say on your behalf? Minnesotans had lots to say. We need our kids to go to school. No math, no halftime school, alternating days, et cetera, regular school. And I am a proponent of school choice. If you want to go to public school, awesome. If you want to homeschool, awesome. If you want a private school, wonderful, you do you. If you want to do online school, go for it. Children just being taken out of the school, that was very harmful for many students. And some of the dystopian measures that are being proposed for school next year, if the governor allows them to go, is just unbelievable. I just do not know how anybody is going to be able to be okay with some of the things that I've seen proposed across the country. Our senior care facility death toll is greater than all of Wisconsin in total death. We need another branch of government to provide checks and balances. Patty says Minnesota voters want their power back, and Walz and the members of the legislature work for us. We want the emergency powers stocked and our state completely opened. No more shutdowns. Thanks. Our trust in politicians has been lost. Just so many upset individuals right now. Let's follow the science. There isn't any science going on right now. Please tell him that summer is such a short time to make a living for the year. Minnesota is known for its lakes and resorts, along with restaurants and extracurricular activities. He is killing their businesses. Please stand up for Minnesotans, please. That is true. I live in a district that's heavily invested in tourism. There may be businesses that never, ever operate again. People closed their doors. They were already holding on by a thin, thin thread. Wisconsin has been fully open for a month, Jason says, and no sky is falling. Tell him if he cannot follow the rules, why should the rest of us of the state follow the rules? William says all businesses need to be able to open back to full capacity. While I operate an essential business and have never stopped working, my next dilemma is running out of parts because factories are not able to open. In time, people will not be able to get their projects, including emergencies, taken care of, which also consists of essentials like heat and AC and electricity. Timothy says all business owners are essential to their families. David says, declare your district a walled-free zone and open the doors to prosperity. I ask that you listen to these individuals. How can we, Michael says, how can we allow one individual to decide the fate of so many businesses when he thought a candy store was critical to open a month ago? These are questions that people want to know. They want answers. Members, we're all up for election. And if you feel that Governor Walz is allowed or should be able to continue these emergency powers indefinitely, then why are you even running for office? You should just give up your certificate and say, you know what? My voice isn't needed. We have Governor Walz. Because that's what you're telling your constituents when you continue to vote against removing those emergency powers. It is time to open our state, to unleash the economic engine. Small business is ready. Small business is the backbone of the economic force, and without small business, we cannot survive. We will collapse. And as much as some people would like to see us collapse, this state has much more to offer. We have so much ingenuity, talent, work ethic. Our constituents are worth fighting for, and that's why we sit in the seats and hold our election certificates proudly, proudly, members. I love the people of my district. I absolutely love them. I say that I represent the best, because I do. On Wednesday, I went to Otter Tail and had coffee, my very first constituent coffee of the year, and I was so excited. I held it at 7:00 AM, and for many of you, you know that I am not a morning person, and if I show up, I'm usually a little late. I wasn't late that day. I walked into Betty's Pantry at 7:00 AM to have coffee with my constituents, because I miss them. I miss that communing with them, laughing with them, sharing with them what was happening at the legislature. It was a good time. I stayed there for two hours at Betty's Pantry on the main street of Otter Tail. Vanessa and John, hard-working business owners, hard-working. In fact, they didn't have any room for patio seating. And they were going to apply for a joke of a plan to allow picnic tables on the highway. That's really safe, right? But the Department of Transportation was like, oh, yeah, we're going to work with you, and if you want to, you want to put some picnic tables out on the highway, we're going to let you. You know what? The hassle was so much. There was like a stack of paperwork to fill out, plus then they'd have to go in front of the city council for a special meeting to get approved, and the owners are like, this isn't even worth it. Thankfully, for Betty's Pantry and many Betty's Pantry-type facilities across the state, the governor said, oh, you know what? I am going to let some people be inside if they choose to be inside. I, my friends, like to think it was because I forwarded the email to the department about how ridiculous the whole idea was, all this paperwork, so that Vanessa and John could put two picnic tables out on the side of their street on the highway, taking up parking spots, mind you, so that individuals could eat their breakfast or lunch. But nevertheless, as I said, we had a great time. We talked about legislative issues, and I did bring up the fact that we were going to be meeting, we were going to be meeting to discuss the emergency powers. One person said she is so sick of the dials, she just wishes she could stick it up somewhere. They are tired of being played, exhausted. They want to work. They want their dignity back. They want to provide for their families, and they don't want to be treated differently. But they are. We don't have very many cases of COVID. We know our community members, we're proud people. Right now, people are not very proud of how this whole thing is being handled. Some told me that, yes, when I brought up the fact that we might be doing a bonding bill, I said, how do you feel about? I said, some individuals say no bonding unless Governor Walz gives up his emergency powers. Many said, absolutely, that is the right thing to do. Do not give him anything, do not give him anything until he returns your voice, Mary, back to the legislature. After I left Betty's Pantry, I started on home, then I went to Henning, and I saw the Country Corner Cafe was open, the open sign was on, and I stopped in there and was so happy to see even more constituents there. And so I had another breakfast. I'm really not a breakfast eater, but I was that day because I was so happy for these businesses to be open, to have people back in there again, and hopefully being able to keep Main Street thriving for many Main Streets. It's the cafe, it's the diner that holds that town together. So I had some coffee, and I had a wonderful bacon and egg biscuit. It was delicious. Chatted and laughed some more, and I went back home, and it was a good day. It was such a great day. But we need more great days, my friends. We need more great days. We need more joy and more laughter in this state. It's been a very, very tough, tough few months. And with that, my friends, I'm just going to say that Minnesota is worth fighting for. And fighting for Minnesota includes removing the peacetime powers from the governor, bringing them back to the people of Minnesota, and allowing us to work collaboratively with one another. Otherwise, as I said, what is the point of your election certificate?
The member from Roseau, Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll try to be brief. Not much more can be said than what's already been said. But one of the things that caught my attention earlier was one of the representatives said that you can't compare Minnesota to our neighboring states, and I take strong disagreement with that. To suggest that you somehow cannot compare Kitzin County to Pembina County in North Dakota or Marshall County to Walsh County in North Dakota, to me, is absurd. In Kitzin County, Kitzin County has a population of just over 4,200 people, and there's just over 1,100 square miles. So we social distance just by the way that we live. So when you do the math, that comes out to fewer people than four per square mile in Kitzin County. And speaking of Kitzin County, the small newspaper they have there, it's called the Kitzin County Enterprise, on June 3rd, in the June 3rd edition, there was a column submitted to the paper, and I want to read part of it. The governor's facing a lot of criticism over his recent decision on how and when to reopen the state. While I don't envy him having to make these decisions, I do think his one-size-fits-all approach in a state that is as large and geographically diverse as Minnesota is creating unequal hardships for our rural communities. In my district, there are no nonessential jobs, and we can't afford to sacrifice any more of our businesses and incomes based on infection rates from metropolitan areas. There are large areas in the district with very few reported cases, counties that can be managed with testing, counties can be managed with testing and common sense safety Members, that was U.S. Congressman Colin Peterson, who represents the 7th District, which is where I live. Kitzin County, I mentioned, has one case of confirmed COVID. We can do a better job of this. I implore the governor to work with me and other members to come to a better solution and get our businesses back open again. The mayors that I've talked to in my area are concerned that after the Great Recession of 2009, we lost many, many small Main Street businesses, and it's taken a number of years to get our Main Streets back so that they're basically full again. They're concerned now that between 25% and 40% of those small businesses are going to be lost, and their doors will not open. Governor, I implore you to work with us to come to a better solution, and I implore members of the House to vote for House Resolution 2, to end the emergency powers of Governor Walz. Thank you. Madam Speaker, thank you.
The representative from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. I will also try to be brief. This has been a long road for all of us and for all of our constituents, and we all shared the need and saw the need for the emergency powers at the time, back in March, when the governor first declared the emergency. I was a strong supporter of it, and I really felt it was the right thing. We needed to get an understanding of how this virus was working, and we needed to ensure that we were prepared so our healthcare system wouldn't be overwhelmed. Our citizens made great sacrifices to accomplish that, and we have accomplished that, and that's really important, and they continue to make great sacrifices. But members, I believe it's time to end it. Many members have said the emergency isn't over. I disagree. The crisis isn't over, but the emergency phase of the crisis is over. People who understand crisis management know that there are many phases to it. Generally, it's looked at as the emergency phase, the management phase, and the recovery phase. We are well into the management phase of the crisis, and it is time to restore co-equal branches of government so that the legislative and the executive branches work together to work on the management phase of the crisis and the recovery phase, which we all hope will be very soon. So I just want to make it clear, members, that we are not, it's not right for us to continue to delegate or give up our authority to the governor in this stage of the crisis, which may be with us for a long time. Are we going to let the governor have unilateral decision-making power until January, until? I don't know when. When will it end? We have to reassert our voices in this debate, represent our constituents, our families, our businesses, our faith communities. We need to have our voices heard, and I know many of the members have said their voices have been heard. I have not felt that way. I have written letters to the governor. I have never had a response. I have called and sent countless emails, and I do occasionally get responses from the critical sectors people, but a lot of times it's to say, well, we'll get back to you on that. And so I don't feel like the concerns I've raised have been heard or attended to on behalf of my constituents. So I really think restoring the balance of power in this management phase of the crisis is essential. And members, I also just wanted to talk about, just for a few minutes, about some of the data, because we say that we want to be data-driven, and I really want to encourage the governor to continue, as I have in written form many times, to take a regional or county approach to this. We are unnecessarily hurting our economic recovery by a one-size-fits-all mandate. We have 87 counties in this state. As of today, as of today, three months into this, two counties still have zero cases. 18 counties have less than 10 cases. 32 counties have less than 20 cases. 46 counties have less than 50 cases. 100 counties, 53 counties have less than 100 cases. Only 24 of our 87 counties have over 100 cases. Of those 24 counties, six have over 500 cases. Six have over 1,000 cases. Yet we continue to treat every business, every school district, everything the same, and it's not fair to those families, to those business owners, to... And it's not fair to those families, to those business owners, to those workers. It just doesn't make sense. That's not doing data-driven decision-making. Members, I'm a geek about numbers. I think most everyone knows that. And back in March, our unemployment rate was two-point-nine percent, and we had one, or three million one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand people in our workforce. In April, there were two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand members, uh, who had a people in one month. So in one month, two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-three people had applied for unemployment, and we had an eight-point-one unemployment rate. So from March, it went from two-point-nine percent to April, eight-point-one percent. The numbers officially aren't out yet, but I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation. As of today, we have seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven people unemployed in the state of Minnesota. If you use the same denominator, the same, uh, people in the workforce, uh, three million, that's a twenty-four-point-eight percent unemployment rate in our state. Members, this is a crisis of a different proportion. We have a healthcare crisis, but we also now have an economic crisis. And I would submit that we are in the emergency phase of the economic crisis, not the management phase yet. We need to get there. But we need to get there together. So I urge members to please join the Senate. The Senate voted thirty-eight to twenty-nine to, um, end the emergency powers just a little bit ago. Let's join the Senate, do our duty as members of the House of Representatives, and restore uh, the co-equal branch of government and the normal functioning of government so we have equal branch legislative and executive branch working together to manage this crisis. Thank you.
The representative from Clearwater, Representative Grosso.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. It's been way too long, been way too long since I've, uh, seen all your happy faces down there in the House chamber. And it's something that needs to be changed. Something that definitely needs to be changed. Members, the governor, by his own actions, in my opinion, has made his, uh, executive orders null and void. Because he allowed rioters. Let's make it clear. Rioters. To run rampant and burn the Twin Cities businesses unchecked, uncontested, without ramification. I look at that, and I guess COVID wasn't the issue, wasn't an issue, while Minneapolis and St. Paul businesses burned. There were no threats from the AG's office to find and arrest. But if a, a citizen, a citizen in outstate and even in the Twin Cities tried to reopen a business just because they're merely trying to help their life's work survive, suddenly you're branded a criminal and threatened with massive twenty-five-thousand-dollar fines. Threats to lose their licenses to operate, et cetera. There are businesses that have already had to turn away and lost up to five-hundred-thousand dollars in seasonal income. We now have a projected two-point-six-billion-dollar deficit. Working businesses, working Minnesotans are the wheels that keep this state thriving. And left unchecked with unilateral power, the governor has jammed a spoke into this wheel. And has essentially caused this deficit. Working, good citizens of Minnesota are not receiving equal protection under the law. As we can plainly see. If it falls upon us, right and left, I don't care who you are, to listen to our constituents and reopen Minnesota, because they're screaming just as loud in Minneapolis and St. Paul as they are in outstate as to what this is, this shutdown is doing to their livelihoods, their businesses. I've also done a little more digging, and I hear everybody saying, you know, we're doing well, we're keeping the deaths down. Well, compared to the states around us, our neighbors, no, we're not. And here's some more information. I've asked, I've asked the, uh, Department, Minnesota Department of Health for the current statistics on suicides, because I'm seeing alarming, alarming information that suicide hotlines, the numbers calling in for suicide hotlines is up dramatically, up dramatically. Do we realize, you know, do we take into consideration, we're coming off a Minnesota winter, and you're keeping people locked up and shut down, those people who, who have some, uh, mental illness issues? They need that contact with other human beings. I shudder to think what the suicide numbers will be from the beginning of the year, beginning of this shutdown, until it's ended, and even beyond then. I get information from, uh, Minnesota BCA as far as their, as far as their crime scene call-outs. They have increased dramatically. Up in my district, they have. And I shudder, I shudder to think what those numbers are going to be in total. So there's new stats, the new stats for COVID deaths, I think you're going to have to include increases in suicides, increases in deaths from violent crime. You keep people locked down, you keep people, uh, unemployed, bad things start to come. And every one of us has stories from our districts in reference to that. Members, leaving the governor on an island by himself to continue to make bad decisions which have ill effect on our citizens is, is quite cruel. It's quite cruel not only to him, but is mostly, it is mostly cruel to our citizens, the ones that we are supposed to represent. I'm afraid the new deaths, the new death tolls are going to include, you know, you're going to include more deaths in our care systems, in our elderly care systems, in our extended, uh, extended state care systems. And like I said, it's going to, it's going to be the increase in suicide. That'll be an increase in violent crime deaths. So members, I urge you not only for the economic side of it, but for the mental health side of it, for the medical deaths that are, that are occurring, because there's some bad decisions being made, and they've been made from the start. Support this resolution and start doing your jobs like we were elected to. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members.
The member from Wright, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am going to read parts of an email each of us received here, uh, maybe a little over an hour ago, hour ago or so. "I am a social worker that works with families in the metro area. Majority of the families I am working with are behind on rent and utilities. The families and I have been working to apply for assistance for emergency housing funding through the CARES Act and other community organizations. However, there are situations where some of the families are not being covered for assistance. Housing insecurity is one of the most difficult issues that families in the metro face. I worry about the influx of people that will be evicted, homeless, and entering shelter due to the ending of the peacetime emergency. Please consider legislation to assist these families with rental assistance and prevent these evictions from occurring." Madam Speaker, I bring this letter up not because I agree with it in entirety. I do agree with the parts of the hardship that are being faced, but I disagree with the conclusion. It completely ignores the fact that private property is being confiscated from the rightful owners and being used for the purposes that government deems, and in this case, government, Governor Walz. Using government to confiscate private property with zero compensation is completely illegal. And right now, members, with the extension of this peacetime emergency, we're going to be going on four months. There are people out there, individuals that may have one rental property or large companies that have hundreds or thousands of rental units. But despite the size, they have tenants. Whether or not they're able to pay rent are not paying rent. And members, going on four months, that's a third of a year. How is that single mom who may have a duplex and lives in one half and rents out the other, who has a deadbeat tenant that has the ability to pay, but knows that Governor Walz and Attorney General Keith Ellison are going to protect that deadbeat tenant from being evicted? What is she supposed to do? A third of a year, members? Governor Walz and the Democrat majority are single-handedly setting the stage to create a housing crisis foreclosure here in the state of Minnesota. And I just read an article to this effect, uh, yesterday, I think it was. There is a mountain of people that are going to be evicted as soon as this comes to an end, and this is being completely ignored. I haven't heard it addressed not a single time from Governor Walz. "When the avalanche of evictions begin, Democrats will be single-handedly to blame. When the flood of foreclosures begin, because owners can't pay their mortgage, because of their deadbeat tenants that are being protected by Governor Walz, Democrats will single-handedly be to blame." And members, uh, I want to reiterate Representatives Haley and Robbins, who ask great questions. When will this end? What are Governor Walz's unilaterally decided benchmarks to end the peacetime emergency? What are Governor Walz's unilaterally decided criteria to return to the Constitution? Where is the transparency, members? Where is the sunlight? Where's the truth? What is the reason? Governor Walz is deliberately being vague. Governor Walz is deliberately avoiding direct answers to these questions because he knows he can rely faithfully on his Democrat majority in the House to protect him and his usurping of the legislative branch's constitutional authority. The constitutional role of the executive branch is to enact and enforce law, not make law. But Governor Walz is not even doing that. Governor Walz made the deliberate decisions which resulted in Precinct Three Minneapolis Police Station being overrun and heavily damaged. Governor Walz's failure to act led to Minneapolis burning. Governor Walz even let our great capital get vandalized by criminals. Despite not doing the job of enforcing the law he was elected to do, Governor Walz is looking over the fence into our yard and lusts for the constitutional authority of the legislative branch. If Governor Walz loves making law so much, perhaps he should have stayed in Congress. The time is long past. We, as the legislative branch, reexert our rightful, co-equal place in Minnesota government. Please vote yes to this resolution, members. Vote yes for the Constitution. Vote yes for the voices of the great people we represent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, this has been a really interesting discussion. I haven't seen, uh, this many, uh, Monday morning quarterbacks since the Super Bowl. Um, I'd like to support the resolution. I really would. And I think the governor would like to have me do so. Um, yes, he did come to our caucus also and say, don't give me too much power. But what are we going to do if we do pass this resolution? The Senate GOP has already said that they're going to adjourn as quickly as possible, so we're going to leave the ship without a rudder. And I'm not going to go to anecdotal, uh, stories, or, uh, as Representative Dowk has promised to, uh, maffalous with baloney, um, and just slow down data. Here's something that people at home can look up. The Republicans have not done their work. The GOP Capital Investment Committee did not meet for fourteen months. And despite Chair Murthy's best efforts, we could not find of, we could not get a GOP member to identify a bill that they would support in the House Capital Investment. So we're going to curtail the governor's ability to lead and go back to a legislative group that frankly hasn't done their job. And again, you can look these things up. This isn't anecdotal. They did not meet for fourteen months. They met for a total of three times and heard nine bills, while we met forty-two times and heard over two-hundred bills. So where are we going to go for leadership when the GOP will not do their job? Um, so yes, I am going to support the Governor's Emergency Powers Act because we have to have somebody that's willing to lead and somebody that is willing to take on these responsibilities. Has every single decision been correct? No. I, that candy store one throws me to this day. There's no blueprint. There's no game plan. This is a brand-new situation, and people should realize that occasionally there are going to be a couple of mistakes. But we cannot count on the GOP to do their job because the history in this legislative session has been, they aren't doing it. And that is something you can look up and check. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Scott, Representative Albright.
Madam Speaker, members. General George Patton once said, "Pressure creates diamonds." But pressure can also create chaos. The difference, then, is how well someone adapts to crisis leadership versus leadership in the good times. When you face a crisis, communication becomes even more important. The people you lead will rightfully have questions and concerns. In the case of this global pandemic, we've been hearing all sorts of things that we've never considered before. When a potential catastrophe looms, leaders must communicate with openness and honesty to keep the trust of the people they serve. That is not what has happened over the past three months in Minnesota. Trust is the foundation of making it through any crisis. When people don't trust you, or they think you'll break your promises or change course without a clear without clear reasoning, you won't be their leader very long. Governor Walz and his administration have told us that they're using data to drive their But what has actually been happening in Minnesota is that the data doesn't match the models They have ignored this and plowed forward. And with that, they must claim the mantle of accountability and transparency for doing the opposite. Pandemic is not a magical word. That means government can usurp our constitutional rights. Government is obligated to show that it has an overriding and clearly compelling interest that would justify continued restrictions on the daily lives of its citizens. That test has not been met in Minnesota in recent weeks. Minnesota has labored under some of the most restrictive executive orders in our nation. We are facing a serious crisis in confidence. Citizens, community leaders, small business owners, and more are asking me why our state leaders have put us in this position. We did not choose this. We did not choose the COVID-19 pandemic. We did not choose for such pain, anguish, and tragedy to be visited upon so many. We did not choose that this virus would cause so many to lose their lives. Or for our loved ones to die alone. We did not choose that our children's education would be turned upside down. But we can choose now. Each one of the members of this chamber must exercise their duty to choose a new course for our constituents and for our state. We have that responsibility, nor the obligation, to make these choices and to do those wisely. We can choose to protect our state's economy from further collapse. We can choose to help three-quarters of a million Minnesota residents to find or return to the jobs that support themselves, their families, and their communities. We can choose once again to recognize the milestones of life. A baby's birth. A child's wedding. A funeral. We can choose to step up and protect business after business after business from fading to black, never to return. We can choose to protect and celebrate our right to worship, to safely practice our chosen faith alongside loved ones and others. We did not choose this pandemic. But each step towards creating this new normal is a choice. The time has come to lift up our state instead of keeping it down. The people of our state are resilient. They are strong, and they are ready to get back to work, making this an even better place to live. We need to get state government out of their way and let people live. Leading in a crisis is hard. No one said it was going to be easy. It requires us to be strong, Minnesota, looking directly at the most difficult problems our state has ever faced and tackle them head-on. I'm confident Minnesota will come back strong. But it will be the people, our communities, our businesses, who lead the way, not the heavy hand of government. Let's work together during this special session to remove barriers to success while protecting and supporting those who need our help. This is not an either-or. We can do both. Minnesota is ready for next steps, and they're calling on us to make that happen now. Members, please support Resolution Number Two. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, the Majority Leader, Representative Winkler. I was going to go with the custom that the maker of the motion gives the last speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, thank you for having yet another debate on the Governor's Emergency Powers and the course of COVID-19 in Minnesota. And obviously, this is a challenging and difficult time. The level of emotion running through our constituents' lives is high. The difficulty of managing a pandemic is extreme, and the amount of information that we have that is solid and knowable is limited. We are in a, what, about six months into a global pandemic on a novel virus that we don't know very much about. We do know a few things about what has happened in Minnesota. We do know that the stay-at-home orders worked. They succeeded in doing what they were intended to do, which first and foremost was to buy us time to accumulate the equipment necessary in order to protect healthcare workers, to protect nurses, to protect doctors, to protect long-term-stay workers. We have built up supplies of that. I think there are real questions about whether those supplies are being appropriately used in our healthcare facilities today, but we have bought some time. We've increased our ICU capacity. We have increased our ability to respond to the inevitable spread of this virus through our population. That's one thing that the stay-at-home order has succeeded in doing. It has also succeeded in flattening the curve of cases and making sure that we are able to spread this out over a longer period of time rather than having this crisis hit us all at once at the beginning. That has been successful. Social distancing measures and stay-at-home orders have also succeeded in driving down Minnesota's R-not rate, which is the number of people that the... A person who has the virus is likely to affect. We've seen a considerable drop in that over the last several months. What we have not seen, however, is a sign that we know what's coming. Nobody knows what the coronavirus is going to do to us. It is highly likely, in fact extremely likely, that we will see a severe spike in the fall. We don't know what cause, you know, what the final result of that spike will be, how many people will die as a result, but we do know, or we can be reasonably confident it's coming. We do know that social distancing works. People wearing masks, people not congregating together indoors, people trying to not spend 15 minutes together within six feet of somebody is a way to make sure that the virus spreads a lot less. And one of the signs that we know that that social distancing works is the fact that we saw a rapid drop in influenza spreading in the population this spring as a result of social distancing. So we don't know the specific numbers. We don't know why numbers in Minnesota started to be out higher than Wisconsin or what that difference is. The populations are different. The communities are different. The way that our cities are built is different. There is a pretty good indication that states like North and South Dakota with a lot less population density, essentially kind of built-in socially distant states, have a lesser spread than others. So there are indications that the population density plays a role in the spread of the disease. We have these comparisons between Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, the Dakotas. In fact, the Dakotas and Iowa don't have a large metropolitan area on the scale of Minneapolis-St. Paul. That is a difference in how their states, the course of the disease runs through those states. It's important. Wisconsin has had its stay-at-home order lifted, but in fact, the mayors of the major cities in Wisconsin have imposed the same kind of stay-at-home executive-type order. So there are dozens of variables just across the states next to us, much less across the country and across the world. What we don't know is far more important or far more influential in the course of this disease than what we do know. Staying apart does help. That seems to be clear. Spreading out the course of the disease, spreading out the number of people, or spreading out people so that they're not congregated together indoors, does make a big difference. Really, the experience of trying to govern a state in the middle of a pandemic is like flying an airplane through clouds and fog without any instruments. You don't really know what's around you, but generally speaking, it's better to fly higher than it is to fly lower. It is better for our state to be more socially distant than it is for us to be jammed together. We do know that. We do know that the stay-at-home orders have had that effect. Minnesota is starting to open up, and we hope that works, but the spikes in cases we're seeing in other states that opened up before us seems to indicate that there is danger in doing this. And those who think that our economy is going to be stronger by opening wide open might just take a look at what the effect has been on the markets. The S&amp;P went down five and a half points yesterday as we saw a spike in cases in states that opened up earlier. The idea that the worst is behind us, that we have this taken care of, that somehow we're over this and the coronavirus is done, it's like yesterday's news, and that we can all move on and the economy is going to recover, is not the reality. Or at least, it doesn't... It is not necessarily the reality. There is a lot of indication that worse is yet to come. So the argument that a part-time legislature with no public health staff should be the group of people who come in and govern the state and run us, make decisions in the middle of a pandemic based on information that is free-flowing and difficult to ascertain, and make decisions based on an argument with statistics of our own making, selective based on what we want the truth to be, isn't really a good argument for how we should govern this state. Now, we set policy, we set budgets, and we delegate authority. We have delegated authority to the governor to make emergency decisions to save the lives of Minnesotans in a pandemic. That is the proper role for the executive branch in this case, particularly when you have a part-time legislature without the built-in expertise to be able to make these decisions and act quickly. That is how our system works. And so, in a, you know, it's sort of like, if you have the pilot of the airplane, you're flying through fog. Generally speaking, you're going to be safer if you fly higher than lower, and then you decide that you want to just turn the pilot, piloting over to all the people who are flying in the back of the airplane. You want everybody to get together in the back, have an argument amongst yourselves about what the best course of action is to protect the airplane as it's flying through the fog. You can do that, but it isn't a very prudent move. It's better to provide the tools and resources to the executive, to the pilot, to make sure that we are flying as best we possibly can through the fog. I'm not going to stand here and say that every decision has been right, that every decision has been fair, or that every form of communication has been perfect. It hasn't. These are difficult, difficult decisions to make. And on the one hand, if you make a decision to protect people, shut things down, and save lives, and you're successful, nobody will know whether you were successful. On the other hand, if you decide to open things wide open, take a risk, and find out that a lot of people, in fact, have been hurt or killed because of those decisions, you will be blamed for that, too. It is the role of the minority to criticize. It is the role of the minority to point out flaws. It is the role of the minority to express concerns about decisions being made. But the fact of the matter is that the decisions that are being made by the governor of Minnesota are difficult. They are no win. There is no upside in any direction, except the side of taking precautions against more people dying. That is what the governor is doing. And we can criticize, we can identify better ways of doing it, and I'm sure that there is no end to the public discussion that the governor is subject to on how he could do things better. But with the information that we have, with the direction that this is going, and with the expertise and knowledge provided by a state health department as a guide, we are not going to do much better than we have been. The legislature certainly is not set up to improve upon it. Debate, argue, criticize, that's fine, that's our job. But I sure hope that you don't actually think that the Minnesota House of Representatives and the Minnesota Senate will come into session now and stay through the course of this pandemic and guide every decision that's being made by the state of Minnesota to protect lives. We have never done it. We're not capable, based on our institutional expertise, and we are not set out or cut out for that role. The purpose of the executive branch, the purpose of having an executive, is to make challenging decisions based on last-minute, unknown situations, and to try to do the best they can in an emergency. The emergency is long, but it's still an emergency, and we cannot vote to end those emergency powers today simply because we wish it were over.
The member from Isanti, the Minority Leader, Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, thank you for the passionate debate about the ending of the Governor's Emergency Powers, which have been going on longer than 90 days. Thank you to the Majority Leader for your comments. And traditionally, the maker of the motion would speak first and lay out their case. I chose to do things slightly differently. I chose to just kind of introduce the resolution and then sit down and listen because I didn't want to influence the debate. If you will, I did a bit of a social experiment. I wanted to see what members said and what they believed and what they felt was going Because what I have spent the last month or two months doing is digging into data like I never thought that I would. And I'm going to talk about some of the things, some of the decisions the governor's made. I'm going to talk about the data that he's used to make those decisions. And I'm going to talk about what's actually happening. And I am only going to use data that is either a result of the governor's model or what is actually happening in other states. I'm not going to glean into it anything. I'll let you connect the dots. And if I give you an opinion, I will tell you so. I remember when this started. I don't... I didn't write down the exact dates that we had the first phone calls, but I remember the first phone call that I had with the governor and, I think, the other leaders, where he said, you know, "This is what our people are telling us. We've created this model at the University of Minnesota and at the Health Department. This is what they're predicting." That particular first model predicted 68,000 deaths in Minnesota. Even if we took stra- Even if we took strong measures, social distancing and stay-at-home orders, 68,000, 2.5 million cases, and our ICUs overrun, overcapacity, we wouldn't be able to treat everybody that needed that ICU treatment. I remember leaving that phone call and, literally, you know, I remember telling people how sobering it was, because these were experts telling me, this is what was going to happen, this is what was likely going to happen. And not just, you know, this is what was going to happen. This was like the best-case scenario, even if we put the social distancing measures in place. And I called my friends and my closest family, and I said, you know, why don't you just, you know, I don't know what's going to happen here, but I just had some sobering information from the administration that is not public yet. Why don't you go to the grocery store and just buy three weeks' worth of supplies in case you had to stay home without leaving your house? And I did that. I'm not kidding. And remember back to that, this is early March, right? Back to that time, nobody really realized that this was going to be a stay-at-home type thing. And my family was like, really? Okay. And I think they did. I did. I went and bought some things. And, you know, then the governor put in play, he shut down restaurants and some other businesses, and put in place the stay-at-home order, and I don't remember the exact dates. But I remember thinking, gosh, this almost seems unbelievable. And I started looking at what's going on in other states. And what he was predicting and what those experts were predicting here in Minnesota just seemed kind of really drastic and really extreme. And so, I remember asking, you know, can we get a briefing on what your modeling shows? Can somebody go through that and tell us how you came to those conclusions, and just walk us through the assumptions that were made in the modeling? And it took some time to get that set up. Maybe if I remember right, around a week. And right before they set that up, they came out with version two of the model. And I never did really see the data behind version one and how they got to those numbers of 68,000. But I, we did get a briefing on version two. And I remember that on that phone call, when they briefed us, and I don't remember the exact number of, they revised downward the death, you know, the kind of ceiling death expectation for the number of Minnesotans that would likely perish because of coronavirus. And I want to say it was somewhere in the 50,000, maybe 48 to 50,000 range in that second model. And at the end of that phone call, I said, you know, we're policymakers. We're going to be asked to appropriate money to respond to this, and, you know, we were in session at that time. We're going to be asked to respond to this from a public policy perspective. Can you do a couple of things for me? Can you plot over time the number of deaths, so we can see when and at what level you think that's going to peak? And can you plot for me the ICU usage, so we can see, you know, the number and when and kind of where that will peak, right? Because as policymakers, we need to make sure that our hospitals have the resources that they need, and by the time that they need them. And we were being told, I remember the original phone call, and then this, the second one briefing us on Model 2.0, the plan was, we need to, you know, lower the curve. We need to spread this out so we can have time to respond, so our healthcare providers can have time to ramp up and get the personal protective equipment that they need. So, I asked for those two things. And I remember the gentleman, and I'm not going to say names, but he said, oh, absolutely, we can get that for you. And I knew they could. I knew this model would create that. And I know that it's not a line. I know that it creates different scenarios, and, but they can kind of give you the window that that will be in. And they said, absolutely, we can. Great. Perfect. Because I think we need that. I think we deserve that. A couple of days later, two, three days maybe later, I got an email from the administration saying, yeah, unfortunately, we can't get that for you. And we're still talking about how we can kind of show visually the impacts of COVID and what this model predicts to the public. Well, the scientists that created the model, who works for the state of Minnesota, told me two days ago you could create it. And I know enough about this to know that that's what the model does, right? I know that it predicts over time, and it predicts levels. I know that it's not exact science. I know that it's only as good as the information that you put in. And I think we all know now that that version one was pretty flawed, and version two was pretty flawed, and version three is pretty flawed. But I want to talk to you about how flawed. So, that was version two. Version two, and I'm going to jump ahead here, about three or four weeks ago, you can see it in my Twitter feed, if you care, about the timing, I realized that I found somebody who could run the model, that there was enough data online that somebody who was a data geek that we all know, it's David Montgomery with NPR, one of our reporters here in the press corps. And I figured this out by looking on Twitter and following his comments. He could run the model, and he did. And he laid out for us exactly what I was looking for. And so, he and I direct messaged on Twitter quite a few times, and I didn't very purposefully just ask him questions, so that I wasn't calculating anything. And I asked him, hey, can you put that in the, like, number of deaths per 100,000 per day, so I could compare it to the very commonly available data that's out there online for every country and every state in the world? And he sent that back to me. That first model, or excuse me, that version two of the model, I don't know about version one. We never did see the, behind the curtain of what the assumptions were on that model. But version two, which we did see, and it was made public, called for a peak in Minnesota sometime, you know, probably third or fourth week in June, and that we were going to peak at a death rate of 17.7 deaths per 100,000 people per day. That's what that model predicted. That was the mean, or the average of the scenarios, and it could have been 40% greater than that or 40% less. But 17.7 was kind of the most common response out of the model. 17.7. Italy, just to put that into perspective, and that was the model that the governor used to make the decisions that he made to shut down our restaurants, and to close our schools, and to shut down our businesses. 17.7 deaths per 100,000 people per day. That was the rate. To put that into perspective, the country of Italy, who we all know was overrun, on fire, some of the hottest spots in the world, still to this day, the country of Italy peaked at 1.36 per 100,000 per day. So, the governor's version two of the model predicted that we would have a peak 13 times greater than Italy? Shocking. Now, Italy isn't actually the very highest. And I'm doing all this part from memory. You can find it in my Twitter feed, if you want to know exactly. There was two countries that were higher. One of them was Belgium, and I think Belgium commonly was reported that they're over-reporting their deaths. They report their deaths differently than everybody else. They were at like 2.36 or something like that. And then Spain was at 1.86 or something like that. But our second version of the model was predicting we'd be at 17.7. And that's the data that our governor used. Now, as a policymaker who needed to make decisions, I had asked for that information from the administration. My guess is, when they ran that information, they saw it and said, yeah, we better not share this, because it's pretty sobering. And that hadn't happened anywhere else in the world. So, fast forward to version three, the current version of the model. They revised it. It's better by about half. The current version of the model calls for a death rate of 8.8 per 100,000 per day. And a kind of best-case scenario, with all of the protections that our governor has had in place, a death toll of about 22,000 Minnesotans would die. Somebody mentioned earlier that Minnesota, you know, so that's the modeling, right? Let's talk about what's actually happening. Somebody mentioned earlier that there's 21 states that are still on the increase. I have spent the last hour on my computer trying to verify that. I cannot. I'd love to know where you got that information. And I'm not going to play gotcha questions and say, is Minnesota one of those states? But I'm going to ask that as a rhetorical question to everybody in the chamber and listening, and everybody at home. Do you think, based on the message we've heard from our governor, that Minnesota is still on the rise and still increasing? Because I'm telling you that the current version of the model, that the information that our governor is currently using to make decisions, suggests that we will have a peak death rate of 8.8 deaths per 100,000 per day, and that that peak should come on July 13. I'm going to tell you what our current death rate is and what our peak was. If I asked you if we were still increasing based on what our governor had said, what would you say? My guess is, most Minnesotans would say, sure, we're still increasing. We are not. We have peaked, just like almost everywhere else in the world. Yes, there are still a few that are rising, and I can find a few states that are still rising. Every one of them has a lower death rate than we do. Most of them, the rise is minuscule when you look at the charts. We've heard comparisons to our surrounding states. And Minnesota's doing so much better. And I'm going to make a prediction. I don't have a crystal ball, but I've been around here long enough to know that what's going to happen is somebody's going to say, you know, we, our governor's response to this was so fantastic that our death rates were much lower than predicted. Mark my words, that will happen. But I'm going to demonstrate for you how far off our governor's data really is. And I think you'll be shocked at how little information we, as a legislature, have been provided. We've heard about our surrounding states being comparable. We are the worst. Number of cases per 100,000, this is a cumulative total, not a rate. Number of cases per 100,000 in Minnesota, 522. Wisconsin, 379. Sorry, I don't have the surrounding states right there. I apologize. I don't, I don't, I just have Wisconsin, 379. But Wisconsin has been open for four weeks. The Supreme Court threw out their executive orders, the same vote we're taking today, the Supreme Court stepped in and said, Governor, enough is enough. We're going to terminate your emergency powers, and we're going to open the state back up. Enough is enough. Wisconsin, 379. Total deaths, Minnesota, 22 deaths per 100,000 people. Wisconsin, half of that, 11. Our death rate peaked. Now, I'm going to remind you, the governor initially projected 17.7, then 8.8 deaths per 100,000 per day. Ours peaked at .41, and we're now down at .33. So, we are on, by all accounts of what's actually happening, and data that you can track, we are on the decline, just like almost every other state and nation in the world right now. Will it increase in the future? We don't know. But we cannot leave our economy shut down based on we think it might, because I have seen data on what our governor thought might happen. And it is so far shockingly off that I cannot personally believe it. Our governor referenced the other day that he needed to keep his emergency powers, because we don't want things to happen here like they are happening in Arizona and Texas. We're at 522 cases per 100,000 people total. Texas, 292. Arizona, 450. Both of them lower than we are. Texas peaked at .11 deaths per 100,000 people per day. They're now down at .07. This has actually happened. I'm not predicting the future. This is what has actually happened. These facts are not in dispute. You can see them everywhere online. Florida, do you remember how critical the press was of Florida? Do you remember the press about the beaches being open and the governor being hounded? Why are you doing this? There was a great article here about three weeks ago, where somebody wrote, and the headline of the article was, "Where Does the Governor of Florida Go to Get His Apology?" Florida peaked at .22, half of our peak. They're now down at .14 deaths per 100,000 people per day. So, why are we higher? Why are we one of the highest in the country? This is where the policy failures have come into place. In the state of Minnesota, 22% of the cases have been in long-term care facilities. But 81% of the deaths, I'm going to tell you some statistics that should shock you. And as legislators, if you do not listen to this and step in and intervene today, you will be responsible for killing Minnesotans, and that is not an overstatement. I'm going to walk you through it right now. Actual data. If you are in a nursing home in the state of Minnesota, and you test positive for COVID, this is actual data based on what has actually happened. If you are a resident of a nursing home, and you test positive, you have a 30% chance of dying from COVID. This virus is extremely, extremely severe for people with underlying conditions or people in nursing homes. A full, more than 1% of all Minnesotans who live in nursing homes have already died of this virus. I'm going to come back to that point in a second, but I want to talk about how severe this is for people who don't live in nursing homes. My data that I'm going to read to you now is a couple of days old, but out of the, out of the Minnesotans who have died, only 210 deaths were outside of nursing homes. If you put that against the population of Minnesota who don't live in nursing homes, 3.71 thousandths of 1% have died. This is what has actually happened. 3.71 thousandths of 1%. Not a single person under the age of 30 years old has died in the state of Minnesota of this virus. Zero death rate, zero case death rate for that age group. Zero. I applaud the governor for taking the steps he did based on the information we had three months ago, but I cannot tell you how wrong our majority leader is to stay here, to stand here and say that we have not learned anything over the last three months. We cannot ignore the body of data that has happened right here in the state of Minnesota. 1% of Minnesotans in nursing homes have died, and if you test positive, 30% chance of dying if you live in a nursing home. You want to know what leadership looks like? I just talked about Florida. On March 15, the governor of Florida issued two executive orders. And I'll tell you what, if our governor was acting like this, I'd have no problem extending his executive power. Yes, while beaches were open, you know how the governor responded to that when he was criticized for beaches being open? He said, well, I don't know why we would close those. Those people aren't at risk. That's right. They aren't at risk. 3.7 thousandths of 1%. I don't have that data in front of me, but I assure you that there are 100 things that you have a greater chance of dying from in this state than COVID. The common flu is more lethal to a healthy person than COVID is. This data is not in dispute. This is actual data on what has actually happened. The governor of Florida issued two executive orders on March 15. One, and his philosophy was very clear. One, and his, and his philosophy was very clear. We're not going to protect healthy people, we're going to protect the at-risk people. So he shut down nursing homes number one, locked them down, said nobody in or out unless you work there. And we recommend that people who work in nursing homes isolate themselves when they're at home, because we do not want COVID transferring into a nursing home. With a 30% death rate of those that test positive, you damn right, we don't want it transferring into a nursing home. The second executive order he did, and this is the important one, folks. He issued an executive order on March 15th saying, "We will not transfer or allow transfer of a COVID-positive patient into a nursing home." Now I'm going to walk you right back to Minnesota. 81% of our deaths have been in nursing homes. 1% of all Minnesotans living in nursing homes have died of COVID-19. And if you test positive, you have a 30% chance of dying if you live in a nursing home in this state. And to this day, our governor still has a policy, and he defends it, to transfer a COVID-positive patient into a nursing home. I got asked about this on WCCO Radio yesterday. They said, well, you know, the criticism of that is where are you going to, where are you going to send them? It's their home. Right? They live in that nursing home. If they're done in the hospital, you know, they don't have life-threatening, you know, when people aren't threatened, their life isn't threatened in a hospital anymore, they go home, right? So we send them back to the nursing home. I don't know, this disease runs 10 days, right? In most cases, and you're over it. Two weeks on the outside, 72 hours you have to be symptom-free, and you're considered to be over it. Leave them in the hospital. Our hospitals aren't overrun. You want to know why our death rate is so high in the state of Minnesota? Because our policy and the policy this governor has put in place is killing Minnesotans. And that's not an exaggeration. That's what the actual data proves. The governor of Florida took the right steps. He protected the most at-risk people while letting people who weren't at risk go about their business and live their lives. Yeah, he shut things down for a little bit, but then he opened them back up. Go back to my data. Florida peaked at .22, half of our peak. They're currently at .14, on their way down. So our governor's following his model, right? Do you know that if you actually run this model on the trajectory that we're on right now, this is a fact. More seniors in nursing homes die with our current policy than they would if we had moved through this quicker. I'm not kidding you. By lowering the curve and stretching it out, the people who are most at risk, we have threatened and, and sacrificed more of them. It's shocking. And it will continue to happen until we change that policy. Do you know why I want the legislator to step in? Because I want to save lives. The governor is killing our economy by trying to prevent people from getting this disease who aren't at risk. But unfortunately, we don't want to do our jobs. We don't want to have a hearing on this. You know, we don't want to have hearings on the modeling. I have been begging for months, the speaker knows that, I apologize, I'm kind of a pain in the ass, I know. But I believe that we, as the House of Representatives, should have hearings on this. I believe we should talk about the data, bring in the experts, question them. Do you want to know what the, what the administration's response has been to the legislative branch? It just gets more shocking. They update us once a week. Minnesota Department of Health does an update call once a week with legislators. I started asking questions after I realized what this model actually said. You know, I had originally requested that data from the administration. They said they'd give it to me, and then they said, no, we can't, we can't share that with you. I found somebody else outside that had run the model, could give me that data. And then I started asking the questions on the phone calls. Are these the decisions we're making? And, and, and I assure you, these concerns are reasonable. I serve on this COVID committee that, that approves the, the expenditures that the governor has to make. So they send me an email that says, you know, hey, we want to spend so much money on PPE, or we want to buy a morgue. I had asked for data that would tell me, when will we need that, and how much will we need? They wouldn't give it to me. I bet most of you in this chamber don't realize this. The Minnesota Department of Health has canceled their legislative briefing call each of the last two weeks, and not rescheduled it. That's how this administration treats us. And that's okay. If you vote against this motion to end the peacetime emergency, you are saying to this administration that that's okay. I can't do that. I, in good conscience, can't do that. Is this disease, virus, dangerous? It absolutely can be. Are all of us at a high risk? We are not. Based on actual data, this virus, based on somebody who's not in a nursing home and without an underlying condition versus somebody who is in a long-term care facility or has an underlying condition, 2,400 times more severe for the population in the long-term care facilities. But our governor has crippled our economy and tried to prevent all of these people who really this is not a risk for, at getting COVID. When what we should be doing is protecting our seniors. So what our governor is doing is protecting the people who are not at risk, and he's literally transferring COVID-positive patients into nursing homes and putting our at-most-risk populations at risk of death. And some of them have died. Do you want to know why we are twice the death rate of most states in this country? And we're probably in the top 10? I don't have the data on every state, but you can look it up, it's easy. And I'd, I'd bet we're in the top 10, for sure the top 15. Do you know why? It's that policy. Because we have somehow said, oh, you know what, we don't care so much about our elderly loved ones. I'm sorry, I do care about them. And I want that policy to stop right now. Is it an inconvenience for, for a senior who tests positive and goes to the hospital for treatment, and now all of a sudden they're not life-threatening, but they still have the virus? They're still contagious? Is it an inconvenience for them to not go back to their home for 10 days? Yes, it is. But if that saves one life, it's worth it. And when I think about that question that I just laid out versus the damage that our governor has done to our state's economy by trying to protect people who are not at risk, I cannot believe I have watched this unfold and that our governor isn't smart enough to look at the actual data of what's happening in this state and around the country and change his policies. I'm not asking you to govern the policy. I'm asking you to intervene so that this governor has to work with us. I heard people say in their arguments today that, you know, the governor needs his executive powers so he can unwind all this stuff. There isn't a single thing that our governor needs these executive powers for. And we could, in 15 minutes, probably pass a bill with guardrails that would allow him, and exercise authority that we have given him, to unwind this at the appropriate time, when the actual data shows it. And my hope is that we will start doing hearings on this stuff. I can't believe my eyes when I look at the actual data, and I'm shocked that we have just looked the other way and pretended like none of this is happening in our state. Oh, the governor has saved so many lives. We've got one of the highest death rates in the country, and he's saving so many lives? Do you have your heads in the sand? Forty states probably have a, a lower death rate than we do. They've responded to this better. We can do better. And today is the day that we actually have a chance to end his emergency powers. And this isn't politics, this isn't about Republicans versus Democrats. This is about what's doing, about doing what's right. I mentioned in my opening comments that the governor said a few weeks ago in response to something I had said, that when the press asked him about it at a press conference, he said, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm aware that some people don't think this is a big deal, but we're going to continue following the data, and we're going to continue following the science. The last time we had this debate on the House floor, I talked about herd immunity and how we, and it was better for our state to reach herd immunity. And our majority leader stood up after me, and he said, that, don't listen to these guys, they don't know what they're talking about. And not 24 hours later, Dr. Osterholm, I think that's his name, the lead, you know, expert on this issue in our state, agreed with me. And I very specifically stood here today and gave you actual data, actual science, and actual facts. Because I pray every night when I go to bed that our governor will follow data and facts. Because he is not right now. He is not. And he will not unless we intervene. And this is your opportunity to intervene. This is your opportunity to send a message. What will happen? We pass this tonight, right now, what will happen? All of these executive orders will end. That'll be the end of the world, right? A month ago, the Supreme Court did that in the state of Wisconsin. A month ago. What happened in Wisconsin? Everything went down. Their cases went down, their death rate went down, everything went down. And they're fully open for a month. Where's the spike you promised? Where's the spike? It didn't happen. We're already on the decline. It's time to open up. It's time to open up. Minnesota businesses, employers, and employees have suffered long enough. It's time to open up this state. It's time to end these emergency powers, and it's time for our governor to work with this legislature to keep Minnesotans safe. And by God, it's time that we protect senior citizens in nursing homes like the state of Florida did on March 15th. It's past time. Vote yes, let's pass this resolution. Madam Speaker, I'd request a roll call.
Representative Douth requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. The clerk will take the roll on House Concurrent Resolution Number 2, Adoption.
Acem.
Acem, no.
Acem, no. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, no.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bow.
Bow, aye.
Bow, aye. Brand.
Brand votes no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, no.
Carlson, aye, no. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, no.
Carlson, l, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, yea.
Daniels, aye. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, no.
Dafne, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, aye. Ericsson, Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericsson.
Ericsson, aye.
Ericsson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, yes.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, no.
Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hertos.
Hertos, aye.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, no.
Katiza Whittoon, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunis-Pourdean.
Kunis-Pourdean, no.
Kunis-Pourdean, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Lesh.
Lesh, no.
Lesh, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listegard.
Listegard, no.
Listegard, no. Long.
Long, no.
Long, no. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Meckland.
Meckland, aye.
Meckland, aye. Miller.[1766.25]
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, no.
Moeller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson. Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, no. Nornis.
Um, aye.
Nornis, aye. Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, no.
Olson, no. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robins. Robins, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sandsted. Sandsted. Sauk.
Sauk, yes.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Sundin, no.
Sundin, no. Swazinski. Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Aye.
Tabke, no.
Tabke, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, yes.
Vogel, aye. Waginius.
Waginius, no.
Waginius, no. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, no.
Wazlowick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, no. Wagamat.
Wagamat, no.
Wagamat, no. Jong-Jae.
Jong-Jae, no.
Jong-Jae, no. Jong-T.
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 Jong-T, no.
Jong-T, no. Yu-Akim.
Yu-Akim, no.
Yu-Akim, no. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, no. Eklund.
Eklund. Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, no.
Sandsted.
Sandsted, no.
Bernardi changes from aye to nay.
Bernardi changes from aye to nay. Sauk.
There being 61 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail.
House Concurrent Resolution Number Two is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration.
There's another motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
House Concurrent Resolution Number One, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency, terminating the peacetime emergency pursuant to the authority granted